The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Hearing for February twenty five, two thousand and twenty five is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stembridge.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Better Brazza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. The floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the approval of hearing minutes scheduled for nine thirty AM. These minutes are from the meetings of hearings of December third, two thousand and twenty four, December fifth, two thousand and twenty four, and December tenth, two thousand and twenty four. I will make a motion that to approve the minutes from those meetings.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have the extensions scheduled for nine thirty AM. There are eight cases, which I will read one after the other. Then if we have any questions, we can ask them after that, and then make a motion on those, on these. They all seem reasonable. So we'll begin with case BOA nine four zero zero six three, with the address of three Aspen Law Road. Next, we have case BOA one two five eight six three one, with the address of ten twenty seven to ten twenty nine Tremont Street. Next, we have case BOA one two two eight nine three six, with the address of seven to eleven Critis Street. Next, we have case BOA one two seven nine eight zero one, with the address of one twenty Braintree Street. Next, we have case BOA one three 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 one zero two, with the address of four to six Woodville Park. Next, we have case BOA one two nine six one zero four, with the address of one thirty five William T. Morrissey Boat Park. Next, we have case BOA one two two one eight five five, with the address of six seventy one East Sixth Street. And final extension request is for case BOA one three eight seven nine zero three, with the address of seven seventy three to seven seventy five A Huntington Avenue. And those are all of the extension requests.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant the extensions as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have recommendations scheduled for nine thirty from the previous subcommittee meeting on February thirteenth. There were two cases that were both approved by the, at the subcommittee, with first being case BOA one six five three seven one one, with the address of two sixty eight to two seventy four Center Street. Next, we have case BOA one sixty three zero four one, with the address of fifty five to fifty seven Will Street. And those were the two cases for recommendations this morning.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve recommendations.
Brazza, second. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for nine thirty AM. We'll begin with case BOA one six seven.
Want to ask about withdrawals or deferrals?
That would be a good idea, Madam Chair, thank you. Before we begin with nine thirty hearings, are there any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the nine thirty timeframe?
Yes. This is a.
And which one?
Yeah, this is seventy seven Bailey Street and seventy nine Bailey Street.
So that question is going to be for case BOA one six three zero three five two, with the address of seventy seven Bailey Street. And along with that would be for case BOA one six three two seven five zero, with the address of seventy nine Bailey Street. Would you go ahead and please explain to the board?
Yes, so this is Attorney Shabnam Marshmashami. On behalf of those two case numbers, we are requesting a deferral today. We're just waiting for revised plans from the planning examiner.
Caroline?
Yes, do you, Attorney, do you anticipate any further, like a refusal letter and additional violations?
That is what we're waiting for. We've been in communication. We have not received a response. I think they're still just waiting for a response. That was this morning.
Does April eighth work for you?
April eighth, yes.
Okay, would that, may I have a motion?
A motion to defer to April eighth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Muted, yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We do have a raised hand here. Caller six one seven three six four, looking for a default.
I'm so sorry if my hand was up. I will put it down.
Okay, thank you. All right, we see no additional.
All right, please proceed.
So with that, we will move on to case BOA one six seven seven five one five, with the address of thirteen oh five Hyde Park Avenue. This is an Article eighty case. It's the applicant and/or their representative present. Would they please explain to the board?
Hello, board. I am Joe Federico. I am the applicant for the project. As was previously stated, this was an Article eighty project, so we went through an extensive review process with the BPDA and all their members. And it's really had a lot of changes from the original proposal. In October, we had a forty-two unit, four-story building that was a zoning compliant project without any affordable units. And we decided to make the change to add a fifth floor onto the building, which triggered three zoning violations. It triggered a violation for a lack of parking, lack of off-street parking, excessive floor area ratio, and excessive building height with the fifth story. The addition of the fifth floor added twelve total units to the building, seven of which are affordable units.
Are we going to look at the plans? I don't know why we're not clicking on it now. Thanks. Sorry, please proceed if there's something from the plans you want to report to.
Sure, so yeah, this obviously you can see here we have the five stories, and there is a zoning table on the right-hand side which shows our zoning violations. Right now, the building is just shy of fifty-two feet high, which was increased with the fifth floor. Allowed, the allowed height is forty feet. We have twenty-one parking spaces where there is a one space per unit requirement, so there would be a total of fifty-four required spaces, so we need relief on parking. And also on FAR, where the FAR allowed is two, and we're proposing two point eight eight. I'm also here with Mike McKay from McKay Architects, and I'm going to turn it over to him at this point, and he's going to do a deeper dive into these plans.
And I'm sorry, how many of the units did you say were IDP?
There is a total of seven IDP units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Michael McKay. I'm the project architect. Just quickly, Joe touched on some of the zoning work. We work closely with BPDA design staff in helping with materials and consistent use of materials and some proportions. So there's a mixture, the base has a brick, a brick base with openings at the lobby. Then there's a mixture of three different cement board products. We have a wood, sort of an Azac vinyl wood material, and also two other colors of horizontal clapboard, different spacing. If we could just, sorry, go to the next drawing, please. Yeah, this is the existing site. It's at the corner, corner of Hyde Park Ave and Dana. Two buildings on the site. Eleven thousand, almost twelve thousand square feet, just under twelve thousand. Next, please. This is the proposed building at the corner. The garage entrance would be off of Dana about midway through the building. And next, please, it's a landscape plan. So there's amenity space for the residents in the back of the building that's accessed from elevator access and through a back stair. We also have a drop-off area to the right, and the bike storage is for sixty-six, sixty-six bikes. Next, please. Just a, just a basic floor plan. We have a basement with mechanicals, and next, please. This is the garage level just blown up, just a little bit more detail. Again, Dana is at the bottom of the sheet, and Hyde Park Ave on the right side at an angle. And then the next one is just a typical floor plan. We have a mixture of fifty-four units, a mixture of forty-four studios, range from four hundred and fifty to five hundred and fifty square feet, eight one-bedrooms and two two-bedroom units with the seven, seven affordable units. Next, please. The next one is just a, next couple are just typical floor plans. We could scroll through those. Please, thank you. And we are proposing a roof deck and concealed condenses adjacent to it. Next, please. And this is just a blow-up of the elevation from Dana. If we could go to the next, next one, you can see, this is the Hyde Park Avenue again. It's at an angle, so it's not just a straight-on view, but this has a mixture of the materials that we discussed. I think that's, that's an overall, an overview of the project and can answer any questions. Thank you.
So is the main entrance from Hyde Park Ave or from Dana?
At the corner.
At the corner, okay. Questions from the board?
I don't have questions, more of an observation. You're abutting approximately like four existing residential structures. And I know that the base is a parking, it's basically kind of covering parking at the rear. Do you have any plans for landscape and vegetation along that public way? Just so that the residents, as they're going down Dana Ave, are not confronting, you know, a large kind of masonry-based structure?
I can address that. So we are going to be adding five street trees along Dana Ave, along with permeable pavers within the furnishing zone, and then additional two street trees on Hyde Park Ave with a wider four-foot furnishing zone, all with permeable pavers. We're also going to have, at this point, it's a three-foot wide planting strip along Dana Ave up until the point where it bumps out where the bicycle room is there. And we've also been in talk with some of the neighbors to increase that three-foot setback to approximately seven feet. So it's possible that that gets expanded and this building gets shrunk down slightly. It wouldn't affect any zoning issues, but we very well could expand that space on the back of the sidewalk to just be more heavily landscaped.
Okay, and the roof is accessible, it's common roof access, correct, to all the residents?
That's correct, yes.
Great, I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Yes, is the applicant aware of comments that were made by the Disabilities Commission?
Actually, Norm, I did have a chance to review the plans, and it is accessible through an elevator. There should be no issue with accessibility, but the architect can confirm.
I did not see the comments, but the, all spaces are accessible. The roof is accessible and the rear amenity space is completely accessible.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board? May we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, as you heard from the proponent. This went through a Boston Planning Community Process involving a public meeting over the summer. The applicant was also in contact with the Hyde Park Neighbor Association. I believe attended a couple of their meetings. From the, from the public meeting, there was some feedback, including shrinking of the density, requests for more green infrastructure, increasing the setbacks, which the proponent has alluded to, conversations with some direct butters on, as well as the use of solar energy and a robust rodent control plan during the construction process. There's also requests, I think I mentioned, stackers for inside the parking facility to potentially increase the number of spots that could be used. There was one direct to butter, or I believe since filed a motion with the Superior Court, raising concerns with the project and challenging the Boston Planning Department. In light of that, the Hyde Park Neighbor Association requests a deferral related to this project. We don't have any direct letters of support or opposition, from what I understand, but the Boston Planning Department would have shared what responses and documents they've received from the community. But that will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the planning department planner on this, on, or project manager?
Don't see a, oh, yep, Daniel, go ahead. Send a request to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dan Polanco here at the Boston Plan Department. I am project manager for this project. We did go through the community process, and they got board approval as well. And so just in our, in our side of the planning department, did you go through the process, and we did conduct public meetings and got board approval. So we're still working through internal conversations with design review.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Yep, caller, go ahead, unmute it. You looking to give testimony? You want to ring me?
Yes, hi, hi, sorry, I wasn't sure if that was me or a caller. Yes, thank you to the board for giving me time to provide testimony. So I am a direct to butter of this project at thirteen oh five Hyde Park Ave. My name is Irene McAlidys, and I live at three Dana Ave. My family's owned our six-family home since nineteen eighty-four. We went five of our apartments to tenants, and today I'm speaking, again, not just for myself, but also to represent them. Many of them are unable to make meetings like this due to work concerns, language access needs, and it makes them difficult to attend and participate in these processes. However, in the past, they have shared their concerns with the BPDA through letters, and I want to make sure that their voices are also represented today. We have requested a thirty-day deferral of this hearing, but as, you know, we understood that that was not possible. But this discussion today about this project really can't happen without understanding some of what's been allowed to happen on our block. Over the last five years, our small one-way street, it's about two hundred seventy to three hundred feet long, has changed dramatically. What used to be eight individually-owned lots is now seven, with four of them very recently owned by out-of-town developers. This has led to evictions, displacement, rising rents, increased traffic accidents, break-ins, and the destruction over over eighty percent of our mature tree canopy. In two thousand and fifteen, there were forty housing units on our street, and by two thousand and twenty-six, that number will likely exceed a hundred and forty. And yet fewer of those will be affordable, fewer than twenty of those will be affordable. We have seen longtime neighbors and friends who can't afford the rent have been forced out, and while these developers profit. And I understand the need for more housing in Boston, but this kind of unchecked and very profit-driven development isn't what our community wants or needs. Small homeowners like us have been left without support, while the developers are receiving preferential treatment at the expense of our homes, our quality of life, and our future here. We've seen a decrease in the quality of life very acutely in our little house at three Dana Ave. And this proposed project, while I appreciate the conversations I've had with the developer, is only going to make things worse. It will impact, further impact privacy, light, air quality, traffic, flooding, which we've already seen happen due to increase in hardscape and loss of trees, and climate resilience. We're going to see an increasing impact from the creation of a heat island, which will also lead to increased heating and cooling costs, and worst of all comes for all of us and our tenants, who are largely like low-income folks that are just trying to get by and enjoy the city. Beyond these impacts, the BPDA's handling of this project has been untransparent, inconsistent, and flawed. You can even see on the cover sheet for this project, it says four stories, when that's inaccurate. It's a five-story building. And we've seen those types of issues and typos and lack of consistent information shared with the public throughout the process on this, on this thirteen oh five project. There's been no clear project plan or filing with the project and a cohesive, complete description of the project available for us to the public until it was approved by the BPDA. And so we're kind of unclear on like what the BPDA or the ZP, DVA has even been approving. This lack of transparency and the process, right, the project manager has said that all of the meetings have been conducted. There was one meeting where the developer came to HPNA, but the butters were never directly notified about these meetings or this hearing today, which again is why we asked for a thirty-day deferral. And there was an opportunity to comment on the BPDA's board's letter. While the developer was granted this right, we were not able to see it. And upon reading it, right, we see claims like energy efficiency, and finally, details about these affordable housing units, which we had no access to until it was approved. This is very one-sided, it's very unfair, and it silences the voice of our community. It's also ignoring zoning laws. They're seeking a speak from Article eighty-eight in three areas, but there's been no justification for why these exceptions should be granted. There's no special land circumstance, there's no demonstrated hardship.
Ma'am, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please, of the neighborhood. Yep, thank you.
Sorry. Are there? Yep, we have a caller, six one seven three six four, sent a request.
Okay, so please, please be brief and add new information.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Craig Martin, Colchester Street in Hyde Park, with the Hyde Park Neighbor Association. Many problems that, as the private college just spoke of, the butter, with the request for a deferral, and we are asking that a member please make a motion for a deferral. There were unanswered questions we've been seeking since the beginning. One main fallacy that BPDA has refused to answer to through our council, through our city councilor, is the zoning district in which they're located in. They claim to be in an NS two district, which includes Cleary Square, but the zoning map, and I request the board to please look at the zoning map at this moment. The zoning map shows that it is located in an adjoining NS two district. It's not entitled to the privileges, privileges of what they claim they're entitled to, because they're in a different NS two district. BPDA refuses to acknowledge that. And it's, and it is a responsibility of this board to verify what district it is located in. We cannot, the mission of this board should not be to perpetuate this fallacy.
Thank you.
And so please.
No additional raised hands.
Can the applicant briefly address concerns that were raised?
Sure, so we have met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. The comment that Craig just made regarding the zoning district, that's come up on several other projects on this street. I can't speak one way or another on it. I'm not a zoning attorney. I'm only the applicant. We have spoken with the city about this. It's in the neighborhood two shopping district in the Cleary Square area. I know of Craig speaking of a third zoning district that is not referenced in the zoning bylaws, so I can't really explain further of what he means by that other than just saying that this project was submitted to inspection services.
Sarah, you're frozen. I don't know if someone can let the applicant know he's frozen. You may want to turn off your video if you can hear me, so that you can continue. Jessica, I don't know, is there a way to, okay, you're, you've been frozen. I don't know if you need to turn off your video, but we haven't heard anything you've said.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, seriously, I don't, I don't know what happened there, sorry about that.
That's okay, so the only thing we heard was, you know, the, the zoning, the, the district that you're, you're, you're in.
Right, so, we're, we're in the neighborhood two shopping district, um, within the Cleary Square designation. There's a requirement of one parking space per unit. We have fifty-four apartments proposed with twenty-one parking spaces, so we need a, um, we have a violation there, we need a variance on parking. I think what Craig is trying to say that is there, there's a third neighborhood two shopping district, which is not, um, mentioned in the zoning bylaws, um, which would require more parking. We have a violation for it regardless, um, and I know Craig has brought up this issue on the two neighboring developments, um, at seven and eleven, um, Dana Ave, which the same argument was made and there, the decision was that there is not a third neighborhood two zoning district that allows, uh, has a different parking requirement. So, um, that's kind of my two cents there, um...
Are there questions from the board? Hearing, hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll perform a motion. Given that the project is close to the MBTA commuter rail, I see this as a transit-oriented development and, um, for these reasons, I'd like to make a motion of approval with the proviso that, um, the applicant follows the BPD memorandum and that it includes seven IDP units. I would also like to ask that BPD, in the review process, just reviews the, um, the first floor kind of detailing along Dana Street. I think it requires a little bit more of a closer detailing, uh, given it's such a long wall. No further, no further comments.
Is there second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two cases have been deferred, have been deferred. So we'll move on to case BOA one six seven nine five four two, with the address of twenty-three Nottingham Street. This case is in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Housing. If there is a, if the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Easter for the law firm of Dane Torpey, one seventy-five Federal Street, Boston zero two one one zero. I want to say at the outset, Madam Chair, and to the members of the board, this is my first appearance before you for the new year, so I want to say happy new year to you all. Joining me on the call this morning are my colleagues here at the firm, Attorney, uh, Timothy Frazier and our proud legal, uh, Fish Flanagan. Also are the, um, the applicants, um, Josh Zachem and Senem Camia, of KZB Nottingham LLC. And soon you will be hearing from Paul Dawkey from Studio Zoom, who is the architect, who will do the presentation on the project. Let me just set the context for the conversation. Uh, there, this is a project which, as, uh, Secretary Stembridge said, is a Mayor's Office of Housing project. This is a total affordable unit, residential unit, there will be twelve of them. What, one, one bedroom, two, seven, two bedrooms, three, uh, three bedrooms. I will have Mr. Dawkey go more detail, uh, Madam Chair, when the plans are presented. What I do want to note for the board, however, is that there is something that was in the, uh, refusal letter, which we take issue with, but I still want the board to act on that. And that is that, uh, that Article twenty-three, which, which adopted the, the zoning commission's text amendment number four fifty-four regarding parking requirements, does apply in this particular instance, which in essence says that a nonprofit, a project that has a certain level of affordability has, does not have to address certain parking requirements. But nonetheless, um, uh, this applicant and developer is sensitive to those needs in the community and has provided eight off-street parkings in this particular instance. But I wanted the board to note that, I'm not asking for the board not to grant the variance, but I want at least directed to be clear with regard to that particular point, which my colleague, uh, Timothy Frazier, so definitely pointed out to us all. So what I, with that, I would, uh, ask that Mr. Dawkey from Studio Zoom do the presentation of the board of the project, uh, by going through the plate.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank the board members again for their consideration of this proposal. Um, here's a, just a brief overview of the factors we considered, uh, in developing the proposed design and, uh, referencing the drawings. Um, if you could please turn to page two, which is the site and landscape plan. Uh, a general note to begin, uh, the existing neighborhood features a mix of triple deckers and single-family residences along Nottingham Street. Uh, because the scale and height of the proposal has more commonality with the triple deckers to the north, we have shifted the building in that direction and we're using the service parking lot as a buffer to provide breathing room for the single-family residences to the south. Um, as, uh, I think was mentioned, the parking lot has seven standard spaces and one accessible space for a total of eight spaces. And there will be a new fourteen-foot wide curb cut to provide access from the street. Uh, we've also used landscaping to screen the building from the street and the butters and to obscure the transformer, which is located, uh, on, near the sidewalk, uh, at the front of the building. Uh, two existing trees will remain and four will be removed. Uh, if you turn to the rendering, this is page five, start with page five. Uh, just an explanation kind of about the form and appearance of the building. Keep going, yeah, here. Um, we think it's important that the building blends into the existing neighborhood and for that reason, we have divided the street facade into three parts, uh, in a way that breaks down the apparent scale of the proposal when viewed from the street. Um, the two bays that are flanking the entry are approximately the scale of the adjacent triple deckers. And we've also included balconies, which is characteristic of, of the triple-decker typology. Uh, also the shape of the bay projections, uh, mirrors the faceted shape of the triple-decker bays. So, you know, picking up on a number of cues. Um, the existing neighborhood dates largely from the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries and the buildings are generally clad in wood siding and shingles. Uh, we have used both patterns, um, in fiber cement to help the building blend in with its surroundings without exactly replicating the historic styles. And if you'll turn to page six, we have some diagrams of the street context. Uh, we put together these diagrams to show the relationship of our proposal to the existing buildings on Nottingham Street. Uh, as you can see, shifting the building to the north creates a stronger relationship with the triple deckers. Uh, however, we've also noted that the single-family residents to the south typically feature one-story porches. For that reason, we have varied the cladding at the first story to respond to the scale of the adjacent porches and to, to visually ground the building. Uh, finally, uh, if you'll turn to the plans, which start, I believe, at page eight. I would just go through these quite, uh, quickly, uh, because I think they're relatively slow explanatory. Um, but yeah, in general, general note, there's four units per floor, single central stair. Uh, both the development team and the Mayor's Office of Housing liaisons have prioritized, uh, family-sized units, uh, for new homeownership projects. This is reflected in the unit mix, which is weighted towards larger units. So there are seven two-bedroom units and four three-bedroom units and there's, uh, one, one bedroom unit on the ground floor. So, um, in conclusion, we believe this project will be a positive addition to the neighborhood and will help preserve a sense of cohesiveness. And at this point, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the proponent, this went through an MOH-led community process, uh, involving, uh, solicitation of feedback from, uh, direct to butters, uh, meeting with direct to butters, connecting with the local civic association. Uh, we received a letter of support from the Mount Boden Betterment Association, um, that appreciated, uh, the focus that the applicant had on just making the building, uh, fit in the context of the surrounding community, as well as the attention to, um, the parking being proposed as well, um, and the considerations to density. Uh, we also received a letter of support from, uh, State Rep, uh, Worrell as well. Uh, with that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected official offices? Okay, so I'll go to the, okay, um, Counselor Indis Johnson?
Santana's office. Ms. Johnson?
Sorry, just unmuting myself. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Indis Johnson and I work for Counselor-at-Large Henry Santana and the counselor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Tiara Satchel, I'm MOH.
Uh, my name is Tiara Satchel and I'm a development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. Uh, this project involves the disposition of city-owned land through the Welcome Home Boston Project. I mean, it's already a program, which is an initiative to, um, increase affordable homeownership in the city. Casey Builders is a designated developer for this site and has the full support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Cassandra and then Anastasia?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, so my name is Cassandra Mayhew. I'm a resident of twenty-eight Nottingham Street and I have some concerns. So I'll just open my concerns because I know this is limited time that we have to speak. So, my concerns are that none of the butters were properly notified at all, not even of this meeting. Um, it was passed on by another homeowner that we joined this meeting. Otherwise, our voices are not heard. We brought up these concerns already with previous meetings. However, it just seems like you guys are just going ahead with the things that's supposed to be done without the approval of all the butters that's speaking in terms of not getting this done. So, it's a concern of minds of why the voices of the residents are not being heard in order to get this project discontinued. The crime rate will go up, we have concerns of parking. There's a lot of things to consider within building these buildings up in residential neighborhoods that's not conducive to what's going on in the neighborhood. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anastasia? Chanda?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chanda Smart and, and as a resident and a proponent of workforce housing, I strongly support this project because of the provision of, we did much needed affordable housing that I believe will also strengthen the community and give more families the opportunity to live and thrive here in Boston. Thank you for your time.
Okay, iPhone caller?
Hi, um, my name is, um, Antwina Richardson-Bottwell. I live at twenty Nottingham Street and, um, I am opposed of this project due to the, um, housing, I mean, due to the, um, parking, um, on the street and we have, um, Chanda said, voiced our concern with the builders and because all this people on the left-hand side of the, on the left-hand side of the, um, one-way street do not have off-street parking. So this is going to cause a large concern with only eight spots for twelve units and most people have two cars and we currently, the parking on the street right now is already full, so there is not even any room to, for us to park currently. So where are we gonna put twelve more units on this one-way street that we don't even have parking?
Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
Okay, any, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Attorney Feaster, can I just, I wanted to reemphasize what I, uh, stated during my presentation about the application of Auto Book twenty-three to this, uh, Boston home projects, but primarily projects that have a certain level of affordable housing, which this project meets by being a hundred percent affordable, that the parking issue is not really, uh, an issue that's before the board, but nonetheless, that's what was stated in the refusal letter. Still would like the board in its vote to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think this is a good project. I appreciate the creation of affordable housing and especially since this is a city land. I think there is, this is the best way to use public, um, land in Boston. As the Attorney, uh, Feaster was mentioning, there is no requirement for parking for affordable housing development, so I see that the developer did more than what was required to provide that parking instead of creating more open space for the residents. But anyways, I think the project is good and I would like to make a motion of approval with Planning Department Review.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah?
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Braza? Oh, sorry, Ms. Wuwo?
Uh, yes, I'll also add that I think some of the variances required reflect neighborhood conditions, such as height and FAR, so this project isn't, you know, out of scale with what is already on the ground over there.
Mr. Langham?
Y-yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and the board. Thank you.
Hi, I have my hand up again. This is Cassandra Mayhew.
I'm sorry, we've, we closed public testimony. Mr. Stembridge?
Next, we have case BOA one four seven three zero six eight with the address of three Cedar Square. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton, on behalf of the applicant. With me this morning is also Eric Zacherson from Context, the project architect. Uh, we're here this morning for the proposed development of a vacant lot at three Cedar Square in Roxbury. We're proposing to erect a new residential building with a total of nine homeownership units and eight parking spaces. Uh, this application goes back a ways and was filed before the updated inclusionary development policy went into effect. However, we are proposing, uh, one affordable unit for the at-grade, uh, unit. This project went through, uh, several design changes throughout the last year and a half and the updated plans were submitted and reviewed by ISD and those should be the plans of record you're seeing on the screen today. Uh, as part of the community process, some of these changes were made from feedback we heard from direct to butters, as well as the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition. Uh, we also appeared before the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for Design Review Advisory Hearing, as this site is located within the somewhat new historic district within Hy- Hy- excuse me, uh, Highland Park. Uh, some of those changes throughout the process, just for the board's, uh, edification, is reducing the total unit count from twelve to nine, as we, uh, you'll see on the plans today. We also cut the building almost in half. We had a two-point-seven FAR at the start of this process, we're now proposing a one-point-two. We also reduced the height by, by two stories from, uh, just about forty-five and a half feet down to twenty-eight feet. And this was one of the biggest concerns we heard from both the butters, uh, as well as the, uh, district was to lower the height. We are somewhat unique site as the site slopes from both left to right and front to back. Uh, so as we go through the plans here, you'll see the street context from Cedar Square, from the park across the street. We're actually now about a half a story below one Cedar Square to our left, uh, based on these revisions. Another major change we made was to increase the, the front setback from about five and a half feet to fifteen and a half. feet to 15 and 1/2 feet, and this was specifically requested by both the Neighborhood Coalition as well as the Historic Commission for two reasons. One was to keep street wall continuity with 1 Cedar Square, and two was to create that line of sight from the abutting Juniper Street looking up at 1 Cedar Square, so as not to block the existing building. This also allowed us to keep many of the front and side trees, which aligns with the Historic Commission's goals of tree preservation. In terms of the building layout itself, we have our main entrance, the one affordable unit, and our sprinkler mechanical room at the street level. You walk in right at grade and it's accessible. Then we then have eight interior parking spaces, which are partially below grade on this level, and again, they're partially below grade because of the change in topography of the site. Floors 2 and 3 are essentially the same floor plan. We have four two-bedroom units on each level, and the four rear units, two on Level 2 and two on Level 3, both have private rear decks. We submitted letters of support from the Butters, and based on the revisions to the plan, the Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition voted to support the project. If approved, we would still need to go back to the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for Final Design Review, again, if we are approved today. With that, I'll pause and happily take any questions, or if any questions on the plan, again, Eric Zacherson, the project architect, is on as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Just to confirm, you said that you will, you would entertain having one unit being affordable?
That's correct. We're committed to the at-grade level, Unit 1, which is the accessible.
Unit 1, so it would be to engage with MOH on that. Okay, great, thanks. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, have you had conversations with the planning department after you made those changes? I see that recommendation we have is still for the old proposal.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Valencia. For whatever reason, the recommendation was based on our March 2023 plans. So again, all the changes that I described have happened since that recommendation. We did have some outreach with the planning department. Obviously, it's a little late to, to change or alter their recommendation at this time, but there was acknowledgement that it's a significantly different project than what was reviewed from early 2023.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office has to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, as you heard from the proponents, representation of an Butters meeting was first held back in June of 2023. After that, they continue to work with the community extensively, meeting with the Highland Park Coalition, I believe, four to five times, working with them, as well as an informational meeting with the Architectural Conservation District Commission as well. We received three letters of support from a media of Butters, and we were told that the Highland Park Coalition did vote to support this project when they last presented on November of last year. With that information, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with, with a proviso that the project does include one affordable unit to enter into an engagement with MOH on that.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair, yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have two companion cases, with first being case BOA 1674434 with the address of 232 West 3rd Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1674435 with the address of 234 West 3rd Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Cedarwood Development and its principals, David Winnick and David Matteo. Cedarwood's architect Shane Losi is also here today, and he will briefly walk the board through the plans for these two proposed single-family homes in a moment. The two single-family dwellings are proposed for 232 West 3rd Street, which was historically used as a surface parking lot for the former St. Vincent's Church rectory building situated on E Street to the rear of the site, and 234 West 3rd Street, an abutting property that currently has an existing single, small, single-family home on it. Before turning the presentation over to Shane Losi, I will speak to the requested zoning relief. Both sites are located within an MFR multi-family zoning sub-district under Article 68, the South Boston Neighborhood District. As such, both proposed buildings are allowed uses. With respect to 232 West 3rd Street, the minimum lot size required by zoning is 2,000 square feet, while the lot in question is 1,500 square feet, requiring a variance. Relief is required for the building's side yard setbacks, where 3 feet is the required setback, but this building is configured to be in rowhouse configuration with the building to the right at 234 West 3rd Street with the shared firewall on the right side of the building. The left side lot line is a street line, since this is a corner lot. Therefore, the building meets the lot line along the East Street side of the building for continuity on East Street rather than having a side yard setback, since the side yard is a front yard on the East Street side. The application is cited for excessive floor area ratio with the maximum by coding 2, while the proposed FAR is a modest 2.35, which is consistent with residential density in the surrounding neighborhood. There is a rear yard setback violation as the required setback with the application, the shallow lot exception, is 15 feet, whereas the provided setback is 3 feet. Mitigating this is the fact that undeveloped, that the undeveloped property to the rear of the site is also owned by my clients, and then again, as a corner lot, that rear yard setback is actually effectively a side yard setback on the East Street side of the building, and the side yard requirement is a setback of 3 feet, which is what here the rear yard setback is. There's a cited front yard setback violation, but the front setback was set to be in accord with existing building alignment on West 3rd Street. There's a cited height violation of 1 foot in excess of the 40-foot height limit set by the code. This violation owes to the sloped grade of the site, which is markedly lower on the East Street lot line, with the building's height being compliant as measured at the building's West 3rd Street entrance. There's a cross-corner setback violation, but this corner is at the intersection of two one-way streets with adequate cross-corner visibility, as demonstrated by the fact that the proposed corner condition is typical of every intersection in this neighborhood. Finally, there is an off-street parking violation of such a single-family home, the code requires 1.5 parking spaces under Article 68, which is rounded up to 2, while what is proposed is one parking space. With respect to 234 West 3rd Street, there similarly are also violations for insufficient lot size. The 234 lot is approximately 1,300 square feet and excessive FAR, which is proposed 2.42. There's a cited violation for exceeding the height of the existing building, but the proposed height of the new building at 234 West 3rd Street is 38 feet, which is 2 feet below what is otherwise allowed by code. There are the same setback violations as 232, with the same justifications there, four, as well as the same insufficient lot size violation that I mentioned. I have read the recommendations at the planning department and do wish to address the couple of issues raised in the recommendation for 234 West 3rd Street, specifically the preservation of the existing structure and, and the creation of an off-street parking facility there with a curb cut. I'd like to point out that these two lots were part of the 24-unit Article 80 project approved by the BBDA in June of 2022, which included the demolition of the existing building. That project was subsequently approved by this board, but was appealed by a Butter, and a Butter. My, my clients unfortunately were forced to abandon that project and have been gradually developing the site with much smaller residential infill construction, including these two proposed single-family dwellings. A four-family dwelling on an E Street portion of the original Article 80 site was approved by this board several months ago. And as single-family dwellings, which are to be sold rather than rented, my clients believe that an off-street parking space is essential for the marketability of the two homes, and it is also less than is required by code. Finally, and importantly, 234 West 3rd Street has already gone through Article 85 demolition review, and the Boston Landmarks Commission in 2022 issued a written determination that the existing building is not significant under the demolition delay ordinance. I'll now ask Shane Losi, Shane Losi, excuse me, to briefly present the architectural plans. Shane?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Shane Losi with 1507 Architecture. Can we bring up the plans again? I'm not seeing one on my screen. Okay, thank you. So this first portion is the 232 building, which we see on the lower-left corner hatched. That's the single-family proposed here, and this is the proposed site plan. In the next slide, please. And here we see the existing site plan with the existing empty lot. Next slide, please. This is just a zoning review. We can go on to the next slide. Here's the lot in an aerial view. You see the empty lot that's currently or previously been used as a parking lot. Next slide, please. Just zoom in on that same lot. Next slide. Again, more context showing that corner lot. Keep going. Here's just a streetscape view from both streets. On the top, we see the existing East Street streetscape with the proposed building in pink. You sort of see it's in line with the massing along the street on East Street, and then on the lower two sections, that is the existing Third Street streetscape. And again, you can kind of see to the right of the project, there's some taller masses, and then we have a couple of smaller buildings, the attached building at 236 to the right of 234, and then the pink building again at 232, which we're discussing right now. To the left across East Street, we have the existing St. Vincent's Church, which is an extremely greater scale than the rest of these buildings. Next slide, please. And just, again, just more context of the, of the corner lot. Kind of see the parking area that's there now. Next slide. Here we have the proposed architectural site plan. We can see that we're proposing a small front porch area along West 3rd Street that the upper building will overhang. At the rear of the lot, we are proposing a sort of outdoor living area, patio at the ground floor. On the back along East Street, we're proposing a small planting strip. There's an existing street tree in line with the backyard. As we move up East Street down the page, we're proposing a street tree towards the corner of West 3rd. As we turn the corner on the West 3rd, we're proposing a secondary street tree in between these two sites. You can kind of see the porch area in the front on Third Street and the main portion of the building behind that. Next slide, please. Actually, and then on the bottom of the screen, you can kind of see some of the materials that we're proposing for this. So here we have the layouts. On the left, we have the basement layout. On the middle is the first floor plan, where we see the front porch, and then we move into a first-floor area that just has a small office and sort of entry area with the garage in the back. The garage uses the existing street curb cut that's there now, so there's no new street cut proposed for this project. And on the right, we have the first floor, which is just living kitchen area, and then a small half-bath. Next slide, please. As we go up, we have two bedrooms on the third floor and then a playroom in line with the stairs, and also on the fourth floor, we have the primary bedroom and then a smaller guest bedroom office in front of the building. And then this project, or this building at 232 is proposing a roof deck as well. The owner who is purchasing this is moving from down the street. He actually lives on Third Street, a couple blocks down, and so this is sort of his family upsizing a little bit into this project. Next slide. So here we have the proposed exterior elevations. On the left, we have the front elevation along Third Street. We kind of, we have a heavy element on the corner to try to anchor the building, and then as we get to the fourth floor, it steps back, and we lighten up the materials to sort of take a bit out of the four-story height. On the right, we have the rear elevation, where we have a large deck off of the first floor. That's where we get the 3-foot setback violation. The building, the main building itself is setback, I believe, 12 feet. That deck comes out, and that's where we get the zoning violation. And then we have a small balcony off of the primary bedroom on the fourth floor, and then the roof deck. Next slide, please. Here we have the west-side elevation along East Street. Again, that corner treatment wraps the corner, and then we step for the other floors with the solar piece. Next slide, please. You just have some renderings of the proposed building, again, with that corner mass, and then sort of breaking it down or trying to soften that fourth-floor mass, and that ties back into the back of the building as well. Next slide, please. That's the, I don't know if we want to discuss the 232 project, or you want to go through the 234 as well?
Why don't we discuss 232 and, and see if people have questions? Any questions? For the applicant?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Sorry, I, I know Mr. Stenbridge read them in together, but I'm going to have them separate since they seem to be, yeah, conducted separately. So is there any feedback on public testimony on this one, 232 West 3rd?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an Abutters meeting on December 16th of 2024, at which a concern was raised about the building height, and another concern was raised about parking, that a Butter wanted more parking, and a Butter made a positive comment about the houses being single families. The St. Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association adopted a position of non-opposition on these proposals, and we hosted a joint Abutters meeting or joint community process, so that testimony goes for both the proposals before you. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sydney. I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn understands that there was a good community process and support from neighbors. This is a project he would like to support if not for his longstanding position, possession of roof decks due to quality of life issues. Thank you.
Sorry, Miss Allen, so he's, he's objecting due to the roof deck?
Um, no position, just opposition.
To the roof, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions on 232? May I have a motion?
Make a motion of approval with the Standing Review.
Is there a second?
I can.
Right there. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
And now if you want to continue with 234?
Can we bring up the plans for 234, please?
Yeah. So just please quickly walk through it.
Okay, so here we have the existing plan, site plan. The building on the left, on the bottom of the page, is the 234 project, the existing building that we're proposing to be taken down. Next slide, please. And then the hatched area is that proposed building here at 234. Next slide, please. This is sort of similar to the previous one, so we can just kind of go through this real quick. There's the aerial, some just birds I use. The streetscape is the same as the last project, 232. And again, this is the existing house now we see that's there now. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed architectural site plan for this project. As you can see, we're proposing an additional street tree in the front-left bottom. Again, similar to next door, proposed outdoor space patio and then that proposed tree in the backyard as well. Again, we have a little bit of a porch area in the front of this at the entry and the garage to the right with the proposed 10-foot curb cut. You see the materials proposed on the bottom of the sheet. Next slide, please. Here we have the floor plans. Basement on the left, in the middle, we have the garage and the entry floor, small office in the back. And then on the second floor, again, living kitchen. Next slide, please. Then we'll lead to next door. We have two bedrooms on the third floor and then the primary bedroom and a smaller bedroom on the fourth floor. On the right, the darkened-out area, it was read that it's a solar-ready area. The transparency on the, on the cat thing didn't print. So this isn't a roof deck. It's just an area designated for solar. Next slide, please. Here we have the front elevation. The thoughts with this building are a transition from the more traditional buildings on the right, going up West Third Street. Again, more traditional, but with sort of a little bit of a modern detailing in that transitions to the more modern building that we have on the, on the corner at 232. Next slide, please. Here we just see to the right is the existing building at 236. So you can kind of see the mass of the building that's going to stay there, connected, and the proposed building here at 234. Next slide. I think that's it. Any questions?
Just that it would have been, it would benefit you if you would have drawn the residential structure to the right to show how your new proposal actually is complementary to its context. But you, you didn't do that. So just kind of, I'm not sure if you've read the BPD's recommendation, but one, you know, one of the criticism is, you know, why are you demolishing the existing house? You know, you're not necessarily making a case for a variance. You know, due to the fact that you're actually now removing a public parking space because you're introducing a new curb cut. You know, that's one. And the other is you're not really adding to the housing stock. You know, so what are the reasonings behind demolishing the existing structure?
The existing house right now.
Right, the existing house. Why, what was the reasoning, what was the request for the variance?
The reasoning for the replacement of the existing house is sort of the condition that's there now. The back owl is like completely deteriorated. It wasn't, there's a proper, there's not even rail foundation out there. We weren't doing additions here rather than a complete rebuild. But it was just the existing first floor is framed. It was just so small that everything is going to have to be framed on the first floor. The old stone foundation that's there now is falling apart. So the whole building needs a new foundation as well. And then also on the, just even the shape of the gable in the front, it sort of blocks sort of any windows that we would have for any upper, upper addition to try to, to make space. There's one of the sinking floors existing right now. We have six-foot-ten ceilings in the back. Though all the reframing that would need to be done to sort of shore up the structure is all kind of.
Did you do a cost analysis, you know, rehabbing versus new?
Sure, the, I'll answer it.
I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions from the board? We have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. As previously stated, we hosted a joint abutter's meeting for these proposals on December 16th, 2024. The primary concern raised was about building height and loss of on-street parking for the creation of a limited off-street parking. The abutters were supportive of the concept or the idea of the buildings being single-family. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sydney. I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. On 234 West Third, Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and feedback from neighbors. He respectfully requests the proponent to continue to work closely with the community on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion to approve with BPDA designer view.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberger?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Berazza?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Wewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1669115 with the address of 105 P Street. If the applicant is acknowledging their representative present, would they please be put in the case to the board?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Francis Adams, business office, address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the homeowners John and Amanda Navian, who purchased a single-family home in June of last year. Also on the call with me is Nicholas Landry from DRT Architects. He'll go over the plans. Quick background on the property. Again, this is a single-family home. My clients applied for a permit to renovate the property in September of last year. They were issued an as-of-right permit. So I just want to make sure the board, when they're looking at the project, almost all of the work that you're going to see, except for what Nick explains, is being done so under an as-of-right permit. The permit was in my clients filed an amend application in September to add dormers to the left and right side of the roofline and also to add a roof deck. The variant, the zoning refusal letter cites Article 6829, which is in a roof structure restriction area. I wanted to just make sure the board is also aware that the change in this roof profile only requires a conditional use permit in order of variance. All work is dimensionally code-compliant. Condition use permit is only required because of the structures proposed on the roof, which meet all height and setback requirements. As you'll hear, we did complete a community process. We have multiple letters of support. We also are aware of the approval recommendation by the planning department. We are aware of one abutter that has some concerns with the property. And we will certainly address any questions that may be asked by the board for us to respond to those, those concerns. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Nick Landry to review the amend application and the proposed work.
Thank you, Fran. Good morning, Nick Landry from DRT. We're the architects on the project. As Fran mentioned, the scope of this variance is really the dormers and the roof deck. I think you can kind of see here in the upper right-hand corner, the 105 P Street is the blue house with the white bay in the center of that rendering. And we're proposing to add a dormer on both the left and right side of the, of the third floor and then also a roof deck on top of that. I think if, if we can go to page 20 of this set, there's a site plan that kind of pretty well illustrates all of this. So you see P Street is on the bottom there, 105 P Street. We have a, so we have an existing driveway on the, on the left-hand side of the property that will remain. And we're proposing the dormers up on the third floor, which you can see by that dark line. Those dormers are roughly 13 feet off the sidewalk, well within the setbacks, as Fran had mentioned. There's also a small deck proposed on the roof of the, of the first floor at the rear of the property. So it would be a second floor, on the second floor of this. And then there's a stair going from that roof up to this, up to this roof deck. The roof deck is also set back about 22 feet from the property line. So also it's very difficult, it's not visible from the street level. And I think that's, that's the scope. If there's any, any questions, I can cycle back through any of the plans. I think this kind of describes everything.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing that, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutter's meeting on November 25th of 2024, at which there was extensive discussion of the violations, but no opposition was stated. And a abutter has raised a complaint that the work began without the appropriate relief being granted. It's our understanding this has resulted in an ISD stop-work order. On January 14th, the City Point Neighborhood Association met with the applicant and determined that their group would neither support nor oppose the applicant. And in light of the stop-work order, they have since revised their position for today's hearing to request a deferral. Our office has received four letters of support from individuals residing in the abutter's radius. And with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Christine, are you going to give testimony here?
I am. My name is Christine McConville. I'm sorry, I'm really, really upset about this and.
Can you state your address for the record?
Sure, thank you. I live at 826 East Fifth Street, Unit 2. I'm doing everything I can not to get unbelievably upset. This has been two months of upheaval for my home and basically my fundamental beliefs that a good government is an open and fair government. And this is not the experience that I've had here. I'm opposed to this project and I represent not just myself, but my other people in the four-unit association. The process is deeply flawed and I would argue, I mean, I think it's corrupt. And then secondly, the project, there is absolutely no need for this. I'm going to start by saying, these people never came to me. They never knocked on my door. They never said that we're going to be able to see into your child's bedroom. They never said, we'd like to see the second floor of your property so we can see just how invasive and how much privacy you will lose. They never filed a permit. They're expanding, almost doubling the size of this home. I would argue that they went in through the side door with what's called a renovation permit. So it wasn't a full vetting. And then later, they amended it to add what they say is two full-length dormers, a roof deck. No one from my building went on this abutter's meeting. I don't know why. I never ever received notice. I did receive a brief notification that somebody put a fire on my door, but again, all directly impacted. People's vehicles have been damaged. It's been a very upsetting, awful experience for us. But no one from my building went on this community meeting. Between Christmas and New Year's, builders came and put up an illegal dormer, blocking valuable light and invading my, you know, my valued privacy. A neighbor lied to me and told me it was by right and to let it go. Another neighbor told me to let it go because a homeowner has a state position and I need to just let it go because it's going to happen anyway. I've spent my life as a civic volunteer. I've lived in South Boston for 21 years. I have never had a conflict with. But they built a roof dormer without permits and they.
Is there? We have another raised hand, Luann. Are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Luann O'Connor, President of the City Point Neighborhood Association. And ONS is correct. I would have liked to have seen a deferral because as the board can hear, there's a lot of different moving pieces that have not been pulled together. I do know that this abutter is scheduled to have a meeting with Mark Joseph at ISD to address the dormer that has already been built. So I don't feel as though the project at this point in time is ready to go before the board until these legal issues have been ironed out between the abutter and that condo association. And so I'd like to leave that with the board and see what you can do to help these two people and buildings come together. I don't feel as though they're ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, did anyone hear me, what I just said? This is Christine again.
No, we haven't, but we, can we, can we, can you wrap up? Because we do have other raised hands.
Did you hear what I talked about, the illegal dormer and all that?
Yes, we heard all of that.
So this, the second.
Okay, let's keep going, Sydney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sydney. I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Please note Counselor Flynn had requested a deferral on this case due to reports from neighbors of construction work currently being done outside of the scope of approval from the Inspection Services Department. On February 14th, the ISD Deputy Commissioner informed Counselor Flynn that they had dispatched an inspector that ordered the contractor to stop working on the dormer's construction since the permit had not been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeal. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in opposition as he believes ISD should make a determination on whether the work being done was as-of-right and subsequently inform the neighbors to restore confidence in the process. He's concerned about precedent and work being done in the city outside of approval from the Zoning Board of Appeal. Moreover, he maintains his longstanding position against roof decks due to quality of life concerns from neighbors, our seniors, persons with disabilities, and young families. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have, the raised hands. Thank you.
Can the applicant address the issues around the work already being done?
First, with respect to the file, I respectfully disagree. I've spoken to Ms. McConnell on numerous occasions about the project. And specifically, I spoke to her at length yesterday. My clients have tried to reach out and talk to her directly. We have multiple emails from her saying she will not speak to my clients. So I would like to address that, number one. That's all documented. Luann was part of those conversations from the CPNA. She was aware of it. With respect to the allegation that work is being done that is not in compliance with the as-of-right permit, we vehemently disagree with that. I think what Ms. McConnell is alleging is that if you look at the claims that were prepared, the initial plans that were prepared, there was a three-foot dormer on the left-hand side of the property that was approved as the as-of-right application. In September, they amended the application to expand that dormer from basically a three-window to a five-window dormer. And I'm sure Nick can show the plans. On the opposite side, there was a dormer added and then roof deck was added as well. But be that as it may.
Is that, is that new? I'm sorry to interrupt because I'm trying to, I'm trying to follow what's in front of us. So just to clarify, the amendment of what's in front of us to vote on is the addition of the, of a dormer to the left that has five windows and a roof deck at the top and also at the side. So above the second story and then also above the third story, correct? That's the new amendment?
Yes, partially correct.
Okay, and so what was approved previously was a dormer that. was a dormer that was three, had three windows to the left side. In the amendment, are you also increasing the size of the dormer?
Yes, and that's where most...
Okay, so I just want to make that clear, because it's an amendment to enlarge an existing dorm... Let's say, a dormer that was pre-approved.
Correct.
Okay, great. I don't have any further questions. I just wanted to have clarity in terms of what we're voting, you know, today.
For purposes of clarity, I'm going to say, even if ISD heard in their application review and the three-window dormer should have been brought in front of this board, we would have been cited for the same exact relief we're seeking today. It would have been an Article 6829 violation. And again, if the board were to vote on this today, it would correct any alleged deficiency made by ISD in their initial review. We don't believe it was, but even if it did happen that way, which we disagree with, by voting today to approve the project additions... And again, it's a conditional use permit, it's not a variance. All of the dimensions for both dormers and the roof meet all of the height and setback requirements. There would be no additional violations. This is a single-family home that two...
I'm sorry, can I ask another question for clarification? The currently is under construction, your project.
Yes.
Is the dormer being constructed with a three-window or a five-window?
Three-window, Madam Chair.
So right now, the dormer is, as has already been pre-approved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully that creates some clarity and communication to one of your abutters.
Take one more second, Ms. Brazza. We did speak with Ms. O'Connell. We did speak with one of the other unit owners in that condo association. We did speak with Counselor Flynn's office. My clients are renting a house right now. This is not a development project. They want to live here. They're raising their two kids in South Boston. They didn't knock the building down and try to build four units. This is a single-family renovation for family of four that want to live in the city. And I would like also to point out the irony of the association next door. That building that the opponents live in was formerly a single-family property. The prior owners to that property came in front of this board years ago and converted it into a four-family. They added debt to the property. So, you know, my clients, the building width between the two properties is almost 30 feet between them, between the driveway, driveway, and the back of this building. I think the conditional use permit is a reasonable request by my client, and I would respectfully ask the board to vote in favor of this in light of the Planning Department's recommendation, as well as the letters of support.
Madam Chair? Yes, go ahead.
Can you get some clarification from the Planning Department? Our materials indicate that this is a variance. While the attorney is saying it's conditional use.
Yeah, Article 68.
Mr. Hampton, are you with us?
Yeah, it's conditional use. That's a misprint. It's not a variance.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a revisal that the third-story roof deck be removed, that only the roof deck above the two-story be approved.
I will second that. I don't mind the dormers, but there's something about that roof deck that just seems out of context. So I agree with Ms. Better Brazza's motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sumbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Lyngham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1661505 with the address of 64 Baxter Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
So we have some raised hands here, one second. Tom Morgan?
Hello, this is Morgan Nian. Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Also on the line is my husband, Matthew Whalen. We are the applicants and the homeowners of 64 Baxter Street, Unit 3, which is our primary residence, where we're proposing to build a new roof-deck garden. I'll note that we did go through the community process, and there were no concerns raised from our neighbors or the other unit owners at 64 Baxter. In fact, the other unit owners support the project. And our project architect, Eric Zacherson, is on the line today and can address any questions that the board has about the project.
Thank you. If you want to scroll down, I'll walk you through the roof deck proposal. Next slide, please. An interesting quirk is that the two roof hatches you see here are existing. I'm not exactly sure what the story was when the building was originally built, but those are two existing roof hatches. They go to the two top units. In this case, we're going to use the one attached to Morgan's unit. So on the left side here, you see the roof deck would be above their unit. You would come out of that roof hatch into an open area. We're proposing a planter up in the front and in the rear of pergola. But basically, the roof deck exists over their space and is accessed via an existing hatch. Next slide. Just want to show you the elevations real quickly. There's no work to be done on the third floor, fourth floor of the unit. Next slide. And then you can see how the building itself is already a fairly tall four-story structure. The deck is on the left side here, and then the pergola that you see here is all the way at the back of the building to kind of help mitigate its height. You see from the back of the building, you see the pergola, and you see the 42-inch guardrail. So fairly small. We try to keep it kind of fairly tight and fairly low to the building. I believe that's it, and we don't have enough conversation.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on November 21st of 2024, at which no concerns were raised. The City Side Neighborhood Association is the active civic group in this area. They declined to meet with the applicant and adopted a position of opposition. It's their standing policy to oppose any roof deck in their catchment area. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Counselor Flynn would like to go in record of opposition due to feedback from neighbors in the city-side area of South Boston and his longstanding position against roof decks. For years, and as a longstanding South... For years, and as South Boston has become a destination for people on weekends, residents have reported quality of life issues in the form of loud parties at mall hours and trash removal emanating from roof decks. Counselor Flynn continues to oppose new roof decks due to the impact of quality of life for neighbors, our seniors, disabilities, and young families. Thank you.
And then Thomas, are you looking to have testimony? Oh, he has lowered his volume. We have no additional raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Lyngham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1682764 with the address of 595 East Second Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Cara Early. I am the homeowner and applicant at 595 East Second Street in South Boston. I am coming before you today seeking a conditional use permit to expand existing dormers on my home, both the front and the rear of my existing single-family dwelling. I'm not seeking use permits or permits for roof decks, head houses, or anything of the like as I'm aware of the opposition to those structures in the South Boston neighborhood. I am looking to expand the existing floor plan or expand the existing height of the existing floor plan and add a bathroom to my single-family dwelling.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on January 15th, at which there were four supporters and no concerns were raised. The Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association has taken no stance on this proposal. They chose not to meet with the applicant. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Sydney from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process and feedback from neighbors. He respectfully requests that the proponent continue work closely with the community throughout the construction phase. Thank you.
Jenny, are you looking to give testimony here?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Salmon. I live at 10 Barnard Place, which is a small road behind Cara's home. I attended her community meeting to review the designs. I have no concerns. Cara is a great neighbor, involved in the neighborhood, and I'm glad she wants to stay here. I fully support this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. I have no additional raised hands. Thanks. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Lyngham? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1677115 with the address of 701 East Second Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Derek Rubinoff. Derek Rubinoff, architect at 82-84 Spring Street in West Roxbury. This is a very simple request. This is an existing triple-decker that we renovated with a prior owner back in 2022, where we finished most of the basement, and all of that was done under right without needing zoning relief at the time with a regular building permit. And at that time, we expanded Unit 1 into the basement, became a rather large unit at five bedrooms plus a den, and just under 2,000 square feet for that duplex unit on the first floor in the basement. And so the new owner, who was our client as well, is seeking simply to divide that existing unit into two, so that basically separate the basement into its own unit. So the first-floor unit would remain a four-bedroom, two-bath unit at about 1123 square feet. And the basement would be a two-bedroom, one-bedroom... Two-bedroom, one-bath unit at 813 square feet. The only work that is proposed as part of this application is simply to reconfigure the wall in the foyer so that there is a door to the... Separate doors to the basement and the first-floor unit. There's no proposed work to the outside of the building at all, and very little proposed work to the inside. But those photographs you're seeing here are the existing conditions of the basement. So the only modification needed to the basement is some minor reconfiguration, where there's that sort of kitchenette on the left that would be upgraded to a full kitchen. And we already have enough parking on the site. We are proposing to restripe the back parking so that it generates an additional parking space without having to pave over the remaining impervious area. The relief we need is really quite simple. We need relief for basement unit that's forbidden. We need relief for insufficient usable open space and additional lot areas insufficient. We had a successful abutters meeting on January 9th of this year, and we spoke with Luann at City Point, and she informed us that her group has taken a position of non-opposition. And we have letters of support from the abutters on either side of us and a third person in the neighborhood as well.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Petitioner completed the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 9th of January. There were two attendees, none were opposed. The City Point Neighborhood Association has declined to take a stance on this proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sydney. I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a positive community process, feedback from neighbors, and the attention to South Boston's existing parking crisis with the addition of another parking spot. He respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the neighbors and civic group on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Luann?
Yes, good morning, Luann O'Connell, President of the City Point Neighborhood Association. The abutters meeting was held. It was not very well attended. The project appears to be reasonable, affiliated with the additional parking spot. So based on that, we did not bring them into City Point for a meeting. We put them straight to ZBA. Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have motion?
Madam Chair, given that the basement unit has two means of egress, this is a pretty straightforward commendable project, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Lyngham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. The first is case BOA 1679431 with the address of 1301 to 1305 Coilsborough Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1684818, also with the address of 1301 to 1305 Balsor Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dennis Quilty, Attorney representing the property owner and its...
Sir, can you speak up? I'm having trouble hearing you or getting closer to the mic.
Yes, ma'am. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'll just introduce myself. Dennis Quilty, Attorney representing the property owner in this case and its proposed tenant, Cisco Brewery, Vintners, and Distillers. As an administrative matter, Jay Harmon from Cisco, who's the principal, apparently has not been raised to a panelist, nor has Mike Fitzpatrick from Samuels and Associates, the property owners. Could they be elevated, just in case?
Are you proceeding? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that they were elevated as panelists.
Jessica?
I'm sorry, you mean you made it out of there, but you were coming in low. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you mean, you made it out of there, but you were coming in low. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think you need to continue to speak up, Mr. Quilty. We cannot hear you well.
Wow. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know what's happening here, but can you hear me better now?
Not by much.
Jesus.
Who do you need elevated?
Jay Harmon?
Jay Harmon and Mike Fitzpatrick.
And Mike Fitzpatrick.
Okay. So if they can press accept once you see that appearing on your screen, it's a two-part process.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna, can you, I'm having a hard time with my sound here. Can you hear me all right, Madam Chair?
You're audibly lower than Ambassador. I don't know what to do about that, but we can't hear you that well.
Hold on.
Thank you. Just need to try to speak up.
All right, I will do that. I'm sorry. I apologize. My sound is not operating properly here, but in any event. So thank you for having us here this morning. I hope with us is Jay Harmon, the principal of Cisco Brewers. Still not hearing me?
Just keep going.
Okay. The application before you, as indicated when it was read into the record, is for 1301, 1305 Boylston Street. This is the site which had been Tasty Burger in the Fenway for many years, succeeded by another restaurant named Our Father's Deli at that site. So there's an existing structure on the site, which was the restaurant for Tasty Burger and Our Father's Deli, surrounded by a parking field. It is on this site, both the building and the exterior parking area, that the applicant wishes to open and operate a Cisco Brewery and related restaurant operation. This would be similar to breweries and beer gardens in various parts of the city, including Cisco in the Seaport, Trillium in the Fenway, a few blocks away, Trillium on the Greenway, two others on the Esplanade, Castle Island in Southie. Again, it's a similar situation to those existing facilities, which have operated very successfully over the last five years. Cisco, for example, has operated in the Seaport for almost seven years without any complaints or issues. We hope to be able to provide the same kind of pleasant experience on this site that we've been able to do in the Seaport area. So what we have is the, an interior application for the reutilization of the existing structure to add the ability to have live entertainment not beyond 10:30. And then the exterior, which is the former parking area, would be, would become the outdoor beer garden, also requesting live entertainment not to exceed 10:30. This would be acoustic. It's regulated very carefully by the applicants. They've done this in the Seaport, as I've suggested, for seven years, completely surrounded by residential buildings without issues in that community. And we believe we can do so in the Fenway as well. We have had an abutters meeting with no objections. We've met twice with the Fenway Civic Association and our understanding is that they are in non-opposition to this application. We have a letter of support from District City Councilor Durkin as well as a letter of support from Pam Beal of the Kenmore Business Association. The application is, again, to use the existing building and the surrounding parking area. The use is conditional in some respects. We know it's been cited as forbidden. We think that was an error. The exterior music ceasing at 10:30 is conditional. But in any event, we need relief for it one way or the other. So we have, in addition, we were cited for a building code violation for plumbing fixtures. That violation has been waived. We have documentation from the Inspection Services Department that the board has waived the need for any further review of the building code and that the plumbing chief will provide any further guidance which is needed. This issue arose over the use of basically portable bathrooms on the site, which, again, is similar to every other beer garden in the city. And again, the state agency said they did not need to review it. So we arrived before you today without the need for that. The BPDA Planning Department has requested design review. We would also voluntarily, as requested by Counselor Durkin, we would voluntarily agree to a proviso that any relief for the live entertainment or the other uses be granted to this petitioner only, which is something which the Fenway Civic Association and Counselor Durkin asked us to consider. We're happy to do it. We're happy to agree to that proviso. And we have with us today Mr. Harmon and Debbie Briggs from Cisco Brewers. We have representative of the landlord, Mike Fitzpatrick, Mr. Joe Dunn, who's the operations director for the site, Arthur Chu, the project architect, and Sean George, who's our project building permit consultant. And again, Madam Chair, we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
I'll just start with a light one. Can you confirm 10 or 10:30? The advertisement says 10:00 PM?
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, our request, the zoning language is 10:30. That was our intention. We're not going to split hairs between 10 and 10:30. However, the zoning language refers to entertainment not after 10:30 PM. It doesn't say not after 10:00 PM. So again, we requested 10:30 PM. I don't know what happened to the change, but again, we're going to accept whatever the board sees fit to give us.
And so it notes seasonal beer garden. What is it when it's not? Is it parking or what is the duration? Is it year-round? Is it?
Well, I can tell you exactly what we do presently in the Seaport. It's basically April to mid-October, generally April 1st to Columbus Day. And that's what we'd be looking for here. And then the use would go back to parking for the structure, which would house the restaurant, which would be open throughout the year.
Okay. And then some comments that came up from abutters? What, where is the stage facing? Are you facing Fenway Park or are you?
Yes, ma'am. The stage faces away from Boylston Street, faces towards Fenway Park.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none. I'll open it to public testimony.
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on January 16th, at which only two individuals spoke. No concerns were raised. Our office has received three letters from abutting residential properties with concerns regarding excessive noise from the outdoor facility later in the evening. The Fenway Civic Association is in support as a result of commitments made by this operator in regards to soundproofing measures and the design and layout of the site to reflect a proximity to residences. The Fenway Civic Association has requested that the relief be granted to this petitioner only so that should the operator change at a future date, they would need to reengage with the community on noise-related issues as the south side of Boylston Street is a heavily residential indirect proximity to the site. And the Fenway Civic Association's letter to the board that expands on this point should be in the board's possession. With that background, we defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Audrey, you looking at testimony? Oh, Counselor, no, go ahead. I apologize.
Oh, thank you so much. As District Eight Councilor representing most of the Fenway, I'd like to go on record in support of the proponent's application. The proponent has worked with me to ensure that quality of life issues such as litter and loitering are, would be properly addressed. And yet, and I know that the proponent is working with sound engineers to design a system that directs sound away from residents with specialists needed for any modifications. I have spoken with Cisco and the operator, who is a local operator and one of my constituents. So I feel confident that they are working with the Fenway Civic Association and others to address any challenges and look forward to continuing to work with them. I respectfully ask the board to approve this zoning relief. Thank you.
Audrey, and then Pam?
Hi, I'm Audrey Epstein Rennie. I am the owner of 1282 Boylston Street, which is the Veridian, a 342-unit residential apartment building. We were never invited to an abutter meeting, just for the record. I would just like to say that although we think that would be a great idea for the neighborhood, we have a number of concerns. The 10:00 or 10:30 makes a significant difference. Also, the initial application said that it was live music until 8 o'clock and then recorded music from 8 to 10. So we would be in favor of that. I would also be in favor of strict decibel level restrictions. The majority of our residents are medical professionals who go to bed early. And I would like some clarity on the evenings that this will be underway. Our preference is for it to be a weekend-only schedule. And we are very interested in the stage and the direction of the noise being projected towards Fenway instead of towards our residential building. So I just wanted to say that although we think this is a good idea, we do really hope that there will be restrictions on the noise that are respectful of the 342-unit apartment building that we have across the street from this.
Thank you. Pam?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Pam Beal and I'm here in my capacity as President of the Kenmore Association. I attended the abutters meeting and members of our group have met with the applicants and we are in support of these requests for zoning relief and we hope that they are granted today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Steve, you looking at testimony here?
Yes. Can you hear me clear?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Steve Wolf. I live in 11 Park Drive. And I'm also speaking for a neighbor, Kristen Mobilia, who lives at 15 Park Drive but could not attend the meeting. We live a block from the site. And actually, some of the questions I was going to raise have been answered this morning. But I will say, nobody that I have talked to in the neighborhood, there's been a lot of conversation about this hearing over the last week because people only became aware of it in the last week. Nobody was aware of the abutters meeting. We're not direct abutters. But the reason only two people showed up is that somebody dropped the ball in terms of notifying people about this meeting. So I would, I would support generally what Ms. Rennie said from the Veridian, that this seems like a good idea, but there's also seem to be, there's both a flawed-- sorry, there are two issues. The planning department's analysis of this made no mention of a residential area that represents 50% of the context. And just behind the Veridian, south of Boylston Street, it's a very dense residential neighborhood that is entirely residential. And the planning department analysis on which they base their recommendation talks only about entertainment uses like Fenway Park and the Music Hall, which are, which is 3/10 of a mile away from this site. So I personally would request that if you approve this license, which, again, I think makes sense, but I think has some troublesome or at least unclarified details that need to be worked out, that you impose certain restrictions in the license. I like the idea that it would only be for this operator, but that's a great, that's useful. But there ought to be actionable penalties if the operator doesn't abide by restrictions, the requirements of this license, which would include whatever time is set for ending the music. And I would agree again with Ms. Rennie. I don't know, just heard about it, her comments. But the earlier you can set that time, the better it will be for existing residential residents. And also, and I think there needs to be a mechanism for people to get, I don't know whether it's to the, to Samuels or to Cisco, to whoever is ultimately the responsible party in terms of the city, to make sure that they have, that there's a mechanism for reporting violations to the city and that the city actually take them seriously because this is a fight we've had for years, years with Fenway Park and their concerts.
Thank you. Please drop off.
Madam Chair, would you like us to respond?
If there are no more public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment. Okay, yes, please. The timeframes, the entertainment, live versus recorded, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would just--
Excuse me, I've had my hand up since the beginning of this. Please.
Oh, Ms. Thomas, Jessica?
I want to be able to hear.
Okay, please be brief.
Yep, go ahead.
I have, I have lived in the Fenway for--
Please give your name and address for the record.
Maura Zloty, 82 Jersey Street. I have lived in the Fenway for 42 years. I have owned a condominium at 82 Jersey Street for 30 years. It's a fallacy that you can direct sound. You can't direct sound. It goes up into the air and it cannot be directed. We know that from the fact that our building is bombarded by sound by every concert at Fenway Park. There are two buildings between us and Fenway Park and yet we need to listen to every concert and our building vibrates because of that. It's a fallacy. You will not be able to direct sound, number one. Number two, when you talk about the buildings that are close to your-- we are a direct line, an open direct line from your parcel to our building. And our building was constructed in the 1920s. We use our windows for ventilation. We are not a sealed building. Most of the buildings directly across from your site are sealed and they have air conditioning. We do not. This is going to be a problem for us unless you put sound sensors on our building to monitor whether or not you're complying with the city's noise ordinance. This shouldn't happen. We are, we are, we are bombarded enough by sound. And we are opposed.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Quilty?
Yes, ma'am. I did neglect to say the live entertainment component ceases at 8:00 PM. It's exactly the same as it happens in the Seaport today, which, again, is surrounded entirely by residential buildings. To protect the neighbors, we have to go through an entertainment hearing and a food and beverage license hearing. And we are subject to the Boston Police inspections as a licensed entity and would be subject to appearances before the licensing board for violations, which they do every week. I can, I'm happy to tell you that we've never been called in for a violation in the seven years that we've been in operation in the Seaport. But there is a system in place to address the concerns that have been raised. As to notification, we provided the proper notification as directed by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an abutters meeting. You've heard the outcome of that. All the buildings that we were required to flyer and leaflet, we did so. We had two meetings with the Fenway Civic Association, wherein our sound engineer made appearances at both and satisfied the members of the association that indeed we could operate without violating noise ordinances in the city. We've been successful at doing this for many years and understand what needs to be done in an urban setting. This is a spot that has been a restaurant and used for this purpose for many, many, many years. And we fully believe we can operate safely and carefully, you know, in the neighborhood. And we will be very much willing to work with anybody going forward. I do think perhaps if, I don't know whether Mr. Harmon wanted to add anything or whether Mr. Fitzpatrick, the owner's representative, wanted to add anything, but it would perhaps give them an opportunity to make a comment. But again, I think there are structures in place. If something were to go wrong and the neighbors had complaints, there are structures in place for us to be called in to city agencies. The licensing board is the prime example, the entertainment division as well, for any violations that occur, any complaints that occur. Again, we've done it successfully in the Seaport and we don't see any reason why we cannot do it successfully in a similar style of neighborhood in the Fenway.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question to Jeff Hampton in regards to the BPD recommendation. I have a question to Jeff Hampton in regards to the BPD recommendation regarding to continue to provide a sunset clause or proviso for the parking. And I want to, just so that it can be open enough to, when the Fenway Transportation Action Plan gets adopted, to give that flexibility. Where are we on that plan?
That's not my shop. I can find out for you in-
So is BPD, is Bob Miklos here that can comment on the Fenway Transportation Action Plan?
I mean, Ms. Better Barazza, I can find out for you, email you later on during the day, but that's not something that the zoning division is involved with right now.
Right, just because on your evaluation, it states that we should continue with another sunset clause, you know, three years from now, they have to come in front of us.
Yeah, we have put those sunset clauses on the parking lots for years, and I think a bunch are starting to come back to you now. Whether or not this board decides to extend those sunset clauses is obviously completely up to you. We would ask that-
Right, okay. I just wanted clarification in that sense because just from the applicant, what you're bringing in front of us is now being able to use the outdoor seasonally to do a beer garden, to do live entertainment, but the sunset clause will also provide an opportunity to see that you have been a great neighbor because you're bringing in front of us a new potential use, temporary use. I'm just talking out loud to my colleagues.
Well, so would the sunset, I mean, the sunset clause you're mentioning is only for the parking?
Right, but it's also, it has provisos, you can do, it has provisos, you can do the same with hours of operation, for example.
Correct. So I'm suggesting-
Yeah, the weight is high and some of the concerns of the residents nearby. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. Fitzpatrick, who represents the Samuels, the property owner, could provide some information on this, in this context. Has he been elevated, Mr. Fitzpatrick? Are you with us?
And the hours of operation would be to 8:00 during the weekdays and weekends, correct? It's seven days a week, no live entertainment after 8:00 p.m.?
That is correct.
And you would have recording music, I heard, until 10:00? Is that correct? Would that be the outside as well?
Yes, ma'am, recorded music only. So the live stops at 8:00 p.m., the recorded music, which of course can be regulated easily, is allowed to go until 10:00 or 10:30, whatever.
And are you proposing during the weekdays as well? To 10:00 when people are potentially working, right? People have to work during the next day.
It's, it would go, they're closed on Mondays. It would go, recorded music would go to, yes, ma'am.
To 10:00 p.m. outside during the summer or during the nice season. Great, thanks. I don't have any further questions.
Would you like to hear from the property owner just in regard to the parking provisos?
No. Are there other questions from the board? Here none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Are we voting, I'm sorry, are we voting on the two cases? So what, so one is for the parking, and the other one is to also provide a relief for the plumbing code violation? So are we going to vote for them separately? There's two cases in front of, or we can combine them?
Just offer a clarification, the plumbing code review was waived by ISD and the state code, the state-
It was already waived, so we're not voting on that. Okay, thanks for the clarification. But still, we have two cases to vote-
Yes, ma'am.
To vote on, and I'm just-
Yes, ma'am, one's inside, one's outside.
Correct, I'm just asking our chair, Chair Don.
We can separate them and look at the inside first. Is there a motion for that?
David, I think you started the motion. I didn't mean to cut you off, I just needed clarification.
Well, now, I'm a little bit confused now. Am I voting on the plumbing code or the overall?
No, on the inside, there's, if you look at the agenda, there's two separate kind of cases. One is for the interior restaurant, and the other one is for the outside.
Okay.
So the first one is the interior?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve with BPD A Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Okay, for outdoor, is there a motion?
I will also make a motion to approve with BPD A Design Review in that the use only be granted to this applicant.
Can we add the, just to make it clear, live music till 8:00 p.m. only or to until 10:00 p.m. only?
Yes.
And Ms. Better Barazza did mention a sunset provision, are you open to continuing that?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Can I have one more, can I recommend one more, which is that the applicant has clear labeling on the exterior for who to call in terms of management if there's any issues?
Is there a second?
Is it sunset for three years?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board.
At this time, we'll ask if there are, past 11:30, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:30 timeframe.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, 81 Lexington Street.
That would be for case BOA 1575584 with the address of 81 Lexington Street. If you'd go ahead and explain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. We are requesting a deferral again on 81 Lexington Street. I received a letter from ISD yesterday at 4:00 that stated that they were unable to provide the requested zoning refusal letter due to ongoing technical updates required to coincide with the new zoning regulations. So I'm not sure what that means or when the refusal will be able to be completed. I intend to, it directs me to reach out to Commissioner Del Rio and Assistant Commissioner Paul Williams, who's aware of the issue as well, so I will continue to do that.
Okay, Caroline, do we have a sense of a length of deferral needed?
We could do March 25th.
Will that give you enough time, Mr. Christopher?
It's a question of the time that ISD needs, Madam Chair. I am not sure, this has been filed since November for a re-review.
Okay, well, we can start with that and see what happens. Is there a motion?
Motion to defer to March 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Still, members of you?
Yes, good morning, good afternoon, Madam Chair, still good morning. Mr. Stenbridge, Richard Lins for 140 Chelsea Street.
That would be for case BOA 1675304 with the address of 140 Chelsea Street. Would you go ahead and turn, Lins?
Yes, thank you again for the record, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, on behalf of petitioner. Madam Chair, asking for a brief deferral, we have some plan updates that we would like to incorporate, including our section plan, as well as some clarification on the off-street parking. I know that planning recommendation had some comments regarding those items, so we feel it would be helpful to have that included for proceeding and therefore asking for deferral.
We could do March 4th, March 25th, or April 8th.
Let's look at March 4th, I know I'm here that day.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to defer to March the 4th.
I apologize, actually, let's do the end of March, I'm sorry, that's probably a little quick for the-
Are you talking about the 25th now?
Please, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's try that again. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to March 25th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other deferrals, withdrawals?
Yes.
Please speak up.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Andre Barboza, and this is regards to property 93 Howard Avenue.
So that would be for case BOA 1615071 with the address of 93 Howard Avenue. Would you go ahead, please?
So I'm requesting a deferral, not on my behalf, but not because of my, any issues on my end. It seems that the ISD Department was unable to review the plans that were submitted in early November. I have spoken to Paul and Mark on two separate occasions, not sure what the miscommunication was, but hopefully I can, you know, get an early deferral date. I'd appreciate that.
Caroline?
I just have a quick question, was a refusal letter issued before?
Yes, a refusal letter was issued.
Do you anticipate any further violations?
No, it's, the plan is, go ahead, I'm sorry, I can't see you on here.
Oh, no, it's okay. We could do March 4th or March 25th in that case?
I'm okay with either, but this is totally up to the ISD Department. I'm not sure where the miscommunication lies on that end, but I'd appreciate an earlier date. March 4th would be fine.
Okay, so may I have a motion?
Well, we could defer to March 4th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other withdrawals or deferrals, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Hello, this is Andrew Melton.
Hello, this is Andrew Melton.
We, um, jumped off against.
Okay, well, let me do, uh, our, make sure we're all here. Mr. Stenbridge? I'm gonna keep going.
President.
Okay.
President, that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia. Ms. Bede Barzo?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
All right, pleasure is Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, we've, um, if you don't mind, we've had a couple of requests, um, to move ahead to, uh, fourteen Winthrop Street.
So I think before that, there was someone else who wanted a deferral. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, would you, uh, and what, what would you like a deferral for, sir?
Yes, this is Andrew Melton, uh, Melton Frey, uh, Architects. So we'd like to request a deferral, uh, again, and, uh, for thirty-six Akron Street, please.
For case BOA, one five nine, one nine, three three, with the address of thirty-six Akron Street. Would you go ahead and explain, please?
Uh, absolutely. So we have a, um, a Thursday evening in-person presentation to the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, uh, so we wanted to have that behind us. This is our third presentation to the RNC, um, before we, uh, met with, uh, ZBA.
Okay, so, uh, Caroline, what do you go?
Uh, we could do March twenty fifth, um, April eighth.
Yeah, March twenty-fifth works great. Thank you.
Okay, will that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to March, to March twenty-fifth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barzo?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Great, thank you all.
There are no further requests for withdrawals and deferrals. Madam Chair, I'll ask that we move forward, um, to a case that will have, um, we've received many comments, and we have people standing by who would like to, um, also speak. Um, so hopefully we can do that.
Okay.
So, um, this will be for case BOA one six seven, one three, three four, with the address of fourteen Winthrop Street. And before we get started, folks, as we noted there, we've received numerous comments on this from both, uh, opposition and, and support. Um, we'll ask that people keep their comments fairly brief, to a couple of minutes or so, um, and ask that we not receive, uh, repeat information. And with that, I'll ask if the applicant and the representative are present, if they would, um, they would go ahead, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, members of the board. Patrick Allender on behalf of the applicant, um, with Gulston and stores, uh, with a business address of one post office square in Boston. I'm here today with Nashira Buril, who's Executive Director and founder of Neighborhood Birth Center and President of Community Movement Commons, and with David Saladick, Senior Principal with the Project Architect Mass Design Group. On behalf of Community Movement Commons, we'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to come back today before you all to present further on the proposed project at fourteen Winthrop Street in Roxbury. When we were previously before the board on February fourth, we heard concerns about the project's community process and engagement, about the proposed use, and in particular, the office component, and about the makeup of the CMC partnership. You asked us to continue working with the community and gathering input from members of the community, including Roxbury Neighborhood Associations. Today, with your leave after a very brief recap of the project, we'd like to address those concerns and update the board on further outreach and engagement since we were last before you, including a productive meeting with the Roxbury Neighborhood Council on February eighteenth. Do you have our presentation available? I can refer to that if, uh, so on this slide, this shows a brief summary of the project. Again, uh, Community Movement Commons is proposing to redevelop the property at fourteen Winthrop Street in Roxbury as a collaborative space, featuring a birth center and about half of the space, and in the other half, a combination of office, meeting, and other communal areas that will be shared among six nonprofit organizations and their constituents. If you can go, uh, or if you can, you can see here, there's a very substantial amount of green space, um, roughly eleven thousand square feet, much of which will be open to the community. Um, also, I want to highlight that there is a very small amount of office space, uh, about twenty-four hundred square feet, which averages out to about four hundred square feet for each of the partner organizations. So again, we're really trying to be thoughtful, uh, in the design of the project and, and, and not overwhelm anyone with office space. Uh, next slide, please. One of the concerns we heard when we were previously before the board concerned the makeup of the partnership. I want to emphasize, our partnership is very strong and incredibly motivated, and we have confidence in the group's ability to bring the project to fruition. That's been borne out by fundraising efforts to date, which have positioned the team to start construction as soon as we have received our required approvals. It's true that City Life Vita Urbana, which was an original member of the partnership, is no longer part of the group. Their exit for the part, from the partnership has nothing to do with the team's vision or wherewithal, but rather is directly the result of a redesign of the project that significantly decreased its overall footprint in response to feedback from neighbors and would not have provided CLVU with the space they required. Next slide, please. The property, as you can see, is located, it's in a three F four thousand sub-district just south of Nubian Square. Based on the underlying zoning, uh, if you can go to the next slide, we're seeking variances for clinical use and office use, a conditional use permit for community uses, and a variance for front yard setbacks on Winthrop and Kearsarge. Next slide, please. Uh, and we can actually go one more down, please. Um, we've previously showed, uh, this, uh, next slide here on context uses. We're including it here, again, to emphasize the diversity of uses in the immediate vicinity of the project site. On our block alone, there are commercial uses, religious uses, residential uses, other nonprofits, and a community garden that's owned by Boston Day and Evening Academy. A similar mix of uses surrounds the area of the project. These uses coexist today with the existing residences in the neighborhood. We feel that the project will strengthen that mix of residential and community uses while transforming a blighted site that, if you can go to the next side, uh, slide, uh, currently features two unoccupied homes, uh, one of which is structurally unsound, into a beautiful project with a significant amount of open space that will be available to the community. Um, and if we can go ahead, uh, a couple of slides, uh, again, and this is just to quickly recap, the set, setback relief that we are requiring, uh, while, uh, we will either be maintaining or improving on the existing setbacks, um, so that the resulting setbacks are consistent with the alignment of the adjacent buildings. Um, and before handing it over to my colleague Nashira, I, I wanted to push back on the implication that the project's not supported by folks who live in the immediate vicinity of the project site. Uh, if we can actually go back one side, please. Um, as Nashira will describe, we've provided dozens of letters of support from immediate abutters and those within three hundred feet of the site. We've also strived to listen to neighbors and hear their concerns. In early twenty twenty-four, as we discussed, we made a very significant change in the design of the proposed project. That was in response to feedback we received from neighbors. We acknowledge that there are folks who live in the neighborhood who are opposed to the project and who believe it's not an appropriate use in our proposed location. I would posit, the first site like this, that is located in the midst of an existing neighborhood, I, I think the board would be hard-pressed to find any project that garners universal support. We've gone to great lengths to design a project to a scale that is appropriate for the site, and we believe, particularly in light of the mixture of existing residential and non-residential uses, that this is an appropriate location for the project, and really the optimal location, given the neighborhood-oriented missions of the partner nonprofits. Our presentation today is the culmination of more than two years of planning and conversations with members of the community, and I would put our community process on par with what's required for projects that are subject to Article eighty review. And with that, I'll hand it to my colleague Nashira. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Patrick. Um, I'm Nashira Buril, Executive Director of Neighborhood Birth Center and President of the Board of the Community Movement Commons. Um, thanks to the zoning board for your time and consideration again today. As Patrick said, this has been a long and, uh, rewarding journey. We've connected with neighbors and Roxbury residents to share our vision for the community space and Community Birth Center. While recent meetings have been specifically focused on discussing plans for the site, the partnership of these organizations and the vision for this offering for the community has been in works for a decade. Um, can we go back to the slides? I can start on that, um, that green abutter slide would be great. So I want to talk about, um, the extensive outreach we've done for this, um, and the support that we have for the project. So we received eighty addresses from a butter, of abutters and properties within the three hundred foot radius of our site. These include schools, nonprofits, residences, and houses of worship. Notably, the pool of abutters is reflective of the neighborhood, so not a one hundred percent residential area. We door-knocked fourteen times and flyered, uh, and mailed the eighty addresses. And to date, we have the support of sixty-four abutters that are within the three hundred feet, um, and we submitted those letters to ONS in advance of the February fourth hearing. Next slide, please. We also have the support of thirty-seven organizations, many are Roxbury-based organizations, some of which are our direct neighbors, um, as well as notably the Boston Public Health Commission, Mass Department of Public Health, and Boston Medical Center. Um, all of those letters have also been submitted to the board. Next slide. Um, we want to emphasize that due to the nature of the project, uh, and the partner organizations, it was important for us to get additional feedback and buy-in from beyond the immediate neighborhood. So through our, our canvassing, we've collected signatures from nearly a thousand people, nine hundred and eighteen people, uh, two hundred and ninety of them are Roxbury residents. Next slide, please. Uh, we're really grateful to have the support of esteemed elected officials, several of whom appeared today to release their support. So I'll go quickly so that they can speak. Um, but we also submitted letters from each of these elected officials. Next slide. I want to just take a few minutes to walk you through our community process. Uh, we've had more than two years of community outreach since we purchased, and actually beginning before we purchased the property in February twenty twenty-three. Uh, next slide. This works a little better when we're clicking through on PowerPoint and not scrolling, but I hope you'll get the gist of what we're trying to build here, this story. Um, we hosted Wednesdays on Winthrop. Um, that was a dinner and a chance for neighbors and passersby to meet the organizations. The architects began to weigh in on the design concepts. That was in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Um, we also convened a community advisory group of abutters who have met monthly for the last, uh, two years and have informed everything from design to community engagement. Um, by the fall of twenty-three, we came up with a design and brought it to Historic Morland and D S and I in advance of submitting to ISD. Um, in those meetings, we heard feedback that while many still liked the idea of the project, the design was too big, too dense, and didn't preserve enough green space. So we decided to go back to the drawing board to address what we heard. Next slide. Uh, you can skip to the next slide. So this process led to a new design in twenty twenty-four. Um, in response to community feedback, the architects at Mass Design produce, produce an entirely different design that keeps with the scale of the neighborhood, is more appropriate to the property. Um, and as Patrick mentioned, one of the original partners, City Life Vita Urbana, exited the partnership to allow us to resize, downsize the project. You can see here, the red outline shows a footprint of the original design, and the blue shows our current design. A byproduct of this redesign is that there's less volume and foot and vehicle traffic. Uh, it's half the size of the previous design and preserves about half the size, at half of the site for green space. Next slide. Um, through an iterative process, we shared the design and gathered and integrated feedback from birth center midwives, uh, Chief Hooly, and Boston EMS, and community members at open streets, kitchen table chats, uh, in the home of abutters, and events at Nubian Markets and Shirley Used House this fall. Um, and next slide, that brings us to the ONS-led community process, beginning with our first meeting in October, a second ONS meeting in December, followed by a meeting with Roxbury Pat Forward in January, and our first meeting with you all on February fourth. Next slide. Uh, since we were last in front of the board, we've done more outreach, growing our number of supportive abutters, presenting to Roxbury Neighborhood Council on February eighteenth, and engaging more elected officials. Uh, before I turn it over to David, um, Saladick of Mass Design, I just want to emphasize that we're really appreciative of all of the input. Um, we've really heard people and, um, taken that to heart, integrated the feedback we've heard. Um, and that we, the nonprofit partners of the Community Movement Commons, are really driven by our love for the people who live and work in this community, um, and believe that everyone who has weighed in, um, in support or opposition, does want what's best for the community, and we just want folks to know that we also want what's best for the community. Next, I'm going to turn over to, um, David Saladick from Mass Design Group. What I think needs to be elevated to speaker.
So what's his name?
Uh, David Saladick, he's in the chat asking.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, David, I sent a request to make you a panelist. Just press accept. See that? Then you can unmute yourself.
Great, thank you so much. Hopefully you can hear me now, everyone. Good morning, um, to the board. Uh, my name's David Saladick from Mass Design Group. Uh, on the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about the, uh, visitor load to the building. So for this project, we anticipate a maximum of twenty total staff in the building. We are providing eleven onsite parking spaces, which meets the zoning requirements for this project. This is sufficient for the staff, since many use public transportation or bike because of the site location and proximity to Nubian Square. In the last meeting, there was a concern raised, uh, by one of the, uh, commenters that we are eliminating on-street parking on Winthrop Street, which is a resident permit parking only. And I want to be very clear that, that we are not. Um, in fact, we are reducing, uh, the size of the existing curb cut from twenty-five feet to twenty-two feet, allowing more space for parking. Um, in terms of visitors to the building, we do anticipate occasional community gatherings, uh, but these are rare, perhaps one to two times per month, of approximately thirty-five, uh, people. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, in terms of programmatically, uh, the birth center shown here in red occupies the ground floor with birth suites at the back of the site, an exam and outpatient spaces at the bottom of the page near Winthrop Street. Both are accessed via the main lobby. Um, on the second floor, gathering spaces in the community kitchen are shown in blue in the plan, and shared office space for partner organizations is shown in yellow. Um, an upper floor entrance directly from Kearsarge Avenue has been provided for staff and visitors with additional access from the lobby. Um, during our last meeting, there was a question about accessibility that was raised by the board. Um, we've looked at that, and I wanted to confirm that on the interior, we do provide an elevator in the lobby, and that all corridors well exceed ADA minimums. On the exterior, we've relocated the accessible parking space, um, as requested, um, nearest to the main entry door. Uh, we're also more clearly in this site plan diagram, showing the accessible pathway in the landscape to the community plaza, uh, on the right, from Winthrop Street, and confirming the private labor garden is accessible from the birth suites. Great, next slide, please. Um, now, I, I would like to pause here and take the next thirty seconds or so and invite you to read the ways in which this project impacts community. Think while the partner organizations here do many different types of work, they are united in their mission to support the Roxbury community. Thank you. Um, and if we could go to the last slide in our presentation, uh, the next slide. Um, to conclude, I, I just want to acknowledge that there is deep history on this site. Um, not just history, but memory, and we have heard about this through our engagement, individual memories of the site, of the neighborhood, and of the Roxbury of years past. And this project honors that history in its form, its materials, and its mission, while also looking ahead to the future, to birth a better tomorrow. And if approved, this will be Boston's only birthing center, a historic achievement, the first of its kind, one of only a few birthing centers nationally rooted in reproductive justice. And outside the entrance of M B C, when a baby is born, a lantern will be illuminated, signaling to the neighborhood that a new life has entered the world. Um, thank you very much for the chance to present to the board today.
Thank you. I know there are a lot of people who wish to speak, so, um, if my colleagues don't mind, we'll just take a couple who are needing to leave, and then we'll come back to, uh, board questions before we open it up. Uh, so I understand, uh, City Council President Louis Jatt, and also, uh, Senator Miranda? Are present?
I am present. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I want to start off by saying that it's not every day that you have a call with the CBA where there's over a hundred and twenty-five people. Um, and it shows how many people love Roxbury, and how many people are invested in this community, whether they're in opposition or in support. Uh, everyone's here for the right reason, and I want everyone to know that I've appreciated everyone's advocacy. Um, and for those that don't know why Roxbury people fight like this, we've gone through everything between redlining, environmental injustice, urban renewal, and many people on. and many people on this call are fighting to maintain their community with their advocacy. The zoning process is not perfect, it is flawed. It's no fault to anyone that's here today, but an applicant for relief working to restore this care in our community goes through the same process as a luxury developer. And the process that's been used historically can sometimes disenfranchise and demobilize us. As a new senator, I've had time to look at my predecessor's involvement and influence with local developments, and I've always wanted to respect the best practice and to respect my city colleagues. Some of my predecessors had a policy of not involving themselves.
Senator Miranda, you're...
Yes, can you hear me?
You might want to go off video because we stopped hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I'm just going to skip to some of my main points because I know there's a lot of people who want to talk, but I just wanted to say that I involve myself in this development process because I've worked very closely with the Neighborhood Birth Center and also on Black maternal health in the Commonwealth. For this proposal, I've made this decision. I am honored to speak before you today in strong support of this proposal to establish a birth center and Community Movement Commons in Roxbury, where I was born, raised, and reside. This initiative is not just a step forward, in my opinion. I think it's a historic opportunity to right the wrongs that have plagued our maternal healthcare system for generations, especially within communities of color. I focused much of my time in the legislature on advancing a bill addressing racial inequities that was signed into law by the governor early this year, late last year. And I want to say that having spent time understanding the birth center's operating model and their plan to co-locate and share this property with other nonprofits, I think is the right move. This is about restoring the midwifery care that Black women have always provided in our community in the center where it's actually needed the most. It's about making sure that Black midwives provide this care and doing it in a safe, regulated environment and as part of the social fabric of this very community. As many of you know, I recently championed successfully passed this bill, which prioritizes support for birthing individuals, particularly in underserved communities where outcomes are the worst in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This bill included dedicated funding for birth centers, a million each year, ensuring that communities like ours actually have access to the vital maternal healthcare services. This is a national movement, and communities of color across the nation have been fighting for birth centers in our neighborhoods. Now it's time to turn those policies into action. Roxbury, a community that has been historically underfunded and overlooked, urgently, I believe, needs this birth center. To date, there's only one birth center in the entire state of Massachusetts, located in Western Massachusetts. This lack of access for our communities is actually unacceptable. Our zip codes are actually killing us, especially given the well-documented disparities and outcomes for Black families that have actually worsened in the Commonwealth over the last ten years. This birth center, I believe, is a life-saving investment in our families, ensuring that more individuals, particularly in our community, can give birth safely, with dignity, in an environment that actually reflects their needs, values, and their culture. While there is support from sixty-four butters and hundreds of Roxbury residents, I understand that there are major concerns from some members of the community, and I want to address them directly. One of the concerns raised is about the demolition of existing housing on this proposed site. Let me be clear, one of the buildings in question has been condemned by inspectional services and was deemed unsafe and uninhabitable with a notice to actually demolish. This is not about replacing affordable housing with office space, but I believe rather it's about addressing a critical need in a space that is currently vacant and unsafe for families. What is being proposed is a transformation of a vacant property and condemned property into a space that I believe strongly would directly benefit the community. In closing, I want to say a couple of points. Roxbury is a historic community. It deserves more than just preservation of its buildings. Roxbury deserves investment in its actual future, and this birth center is an opportunity to make history. While we honor the rich history of this neighborhood, we also have a unique opportunity to introduce something transformative, rather adding it into a way that addresses longstanding need for equitable maternal healthcare. Another concern I want to address is the use of the space by other organizations. I want to be also very clear that this is not about for-profit businesses or commercial developers coming into Roxbury. This is about organizations whose work, mission, and membership are from Roxbury but who have only been able to access office space elsewhere for years. This is not an office park or an office building. The limited second-floor office space will be exclusively for nonprofit organizations dedicated to supporting health, well-being, liberation, and economic democracy for our communities. I also want to address finally the concern about changing the zoning of a residential lot into commercial space. I understand this concern, and it's important to recognize that this hearing today is about requests for only two variances. It does not permanently rezon the area, that is a different process entirely. Moreover, I believe Project demonstrates responsible, community-driven development. I will send further remarks, but in closing, I urge the board to approve the zoning relief variances requested. The Community Movement Commons is about community investment, and a building of vibrant, equitable future in a birth center is actually a matter of public health. We have the opportunity to be on the right side of history, to support nonprofit organizations that are vital, and bring a state-of-the-art birth center to Roxbury, making a significant step towards ensuring that every birthing individual has access to the care that they need. I want to thank you all for my time and consideration, and I look forward to seeing this transformative project. And to those folks that allowed me to give me time, I am the senator of this community, and thank you so much for giving me the time so I could eloquent speak and support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to remind everyone else to please be brief. We have a lot of folks on this case. City Council President.
Thank you. Good morning, Sherry. Good morning, Chair Dong. Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon. I promise I will be brief. I want to thank everyone for coming here today. A lot of my comments will echo those of Senator Miranda. I think that, you know, I understand that there are folks in support and that there are folks against, and oftentimes it's hard. It can be difficult for us to determine what makes the most sense, given how important Black maternal health is to the city, to the city council, and to the work that we've been doing. You know, I've heard from both sides. I was an early supporter of this project, but I did go out on my own to see the site, to see what it would look like, and saw how closely it was to Warren Street and seeing its proximity to a school and to a church. And so I am in support of this project where it is. I do hear a community voice, but I think that this would be a great addition to the Roxbury community and to the city and, you know, commit to working alongside everyone to make sure that this could be a good fit. And I just want to echo something that Senator Miranda stated, that this is not, there's two variances. It's not a rezoning of the neighborhood where I know housing is so important. As a housing advocate, as a housing attorney, I know housing is important. We need to make sure that we're preserving it. It's also a balance in every neighborhood. So I just wanted to go on record and say that and thank everyone for being here.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Reggie Stewart. I work for the District Seven Office for Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. I will be reading her letter for the board. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I write to you on behalf of my constituents to express strong community opposition to the proposed development at fourteen Winthrop Street and twenty-three Kearsarge Avenue. The Roxbury Path Forward, Mount Pleasant Vine and Forester Neighborhood Association, the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, the Morland Street Historic District, and the Winthrop Neighborhood Group have all vehemently opposed this project. While I have received only three emails from constituents in support of the project, I have received one hundred signed letters of opposition from direct abutters underscoring the significant concerns of those most impacted. This proposed development is located within the Morland Street Historic District, a federally recognized district that has been primarily residential since its designation in nineteen eighty-four. The Roxbury Historical Society and local residents were instrumental in securing this designation, demonstrating a longstanding and unwavering commitment to preserving the housing and historical integrity of this neighborhood. The Roxbury Master Plan explicitly calls for the maintenance of diverse housing types, including those within Roxbury's historic districts. This proposal directly contradicts those preservation efforts by seeking zoning relief for a use that is explicitly forbidden under the Boston Zoning Code. The Zoning Board of Appeals has already established precedent in prioritizing housing preservation in this area. And twenty-twenty residents appeared before the Z B A to oppose the conversion of one twenty-four to one twenty-six Warren Street into an office building. That proposal was denied under the same zoning code in place today, even though the site was already being used for nonprofit offices and was located on a major arterial street. The project at fourteen Winthrop Street should be treated with the same consideration under the zoning court, particularly given that it seeks to introduce office and clinic space in a residentially zoned area where such uses are explicitly forbidden. Additionally, the Z B A has previously ruled that office space should be concentrated in Nubian Square, where there are already significant vacant spaces available as confirmed by a study conducted by the American City Coalition and the Boston Planning and Development Agency. Rather than introducing new commercial use in a historic residential district, efforts should be focused on filling existing vacancies in Nubian Square. Furthermore, the five nonprofit organizations that purchase these homes are based outside of Roxbury, listing their addresses in Jamaica Plain and Matapan. Meanwhile, Roxbury residents have demonstrated an ongoing commitment to supporting and expanding housing within their own community. Recently, the neighborhood supported the development of fifty-four affordable rental units at one Waverly Street, reinforcing the community's prioritization of housing over commercial development. The Z B A has frequently emphasized the critical need for housing in Boston, and I urge the board to uphold this principle by rejecting this proposal, which would displace residential use in favor of office space and a clinic, both of which are prohibited uses in this district. For these reasons, I strongly urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny the requested variances for this project. Doing so will protect the historical and residential character of the Morland Street Historic District, uphold the integrity of the Boston Zoning Code, and respect the overwhelming opposition from the residents of Roxbury. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
I'm going to remind folks to please keep it brief. If you have a whole letter, please condense it. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy's office.
Hello and good afternoon, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kevin O'Sullivan. I'm from Counselor Aaron Murphy's office. For Counselor Murphy, this is not about the potential good work that the nonprofits could do. Obviously, that is commendable. This is not about the birthing center. Obviously, there is a conversation to be had there. Counselor Murphy is hopeful that maybe another location could work for that, for those institutions, for those nonprofits. But for Counselor Murphy, this is about the project and the voice of the community. Many of the reasons that Counselor Fernandez Anderson's office has spoken on apply for Counselor Murphy's analysis. Counselor Murphy has not received nearly the level of advocacy for support that Counselor Murphy has received for opposition. And again, Counselor Murphy is hopeful that there will be a conversation to be had about doing that good work in the community. But for Counselor Murphy, based on the information that has been received, based on the advocacy, and based on the ardent and strong level of opposition, Counselor Murphy is opposed to this project. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Rep. Lott's office, Chris Royal.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us here today. Thank you to the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Rebecca Zladoits. I'm speaking on behalf of State Representative Chris Royal's office. Wanted to read the letter that he would like to submit. My name is State Representative Chris Royal, and I proudly represent the Fifth Suffolk District of Massachusetts, which includes parts of Dorchester and Roxbury, not where the site would be exactly.
Can you continue, Madam Ambassador?
I'm sorry, my screen is black. Yes, sorry. I'm also a husband and a father to my four blessings, Carter, Savannah, Simone, and Caleb, the son I never got to meet. Just two weeks after our gender reveal party, where we celebrated the joy of welcoming our baby boy, Suzette and I faced the heartbreaking news that she had miscarried. No mother should have to endure such profound loss, and that's why it's vital for us to advocate for access to the resources necessary to prevent these tragedies, resources that deserve unwavering support from our government. Over the past decade, maternal health complications in Massachusetts have doubled, and for Black women, the risk is two-point-three times higher than for white women. This disparity is not due to genetic predisposition, but rather the result of societal determinants of health that have shaped, that have been shaped by systemic racism. This reality is starkly illustrated by the fact that the highest rates of birthing complications and maternal mortality in Boston are found in Dorchester, Matapan, Roxbury, and Hyde Park. Out of the four hundred birth centers nationwide, Massachusetts just has one free operating birth center located one hundred four miles away from Boston. And even more concerning is the fact that there isn't a single Black or Brown-led birth center, not only in Massachusetts, but in all of New England. This center represents an opportunity, a chance to right historical wrongs, change health outcomes, and save lives. So I urge you to recognize the significance of this project and allow these incredible healthcare providers to help families like mine thrive. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, would you?
Yay, finally. I was getting anxious here. Good afternoon, everyone. I am City Councilor-at-Large Julia Mejia, and I understand the importance of being brief, so I will try to do so. I just want to go on the record in my full support for the birthing center, I believe as what I was called a geriatric mother and someone who was forced to have a C-section when I was pregnant with my child. I understand the importance of having access to quality prenatal care in a culturally competent environment. I think when we're talking about this particular issue, and I understand and appreciate some of the opposition in terms of where we should go and where we should be. I think that Roxbury being the heart of the city, if I will, if I will say so, and especially when it comes to serving Black and Brown families, I think that it is the ideal place, and I cannot imagine this being anywhere else, considering that it will be the only birthing center led by people of color in the city of Boston. And actually, just in New England, this is an opportunity for us to stand up for maternal health, Black maternal health in particular here in the city of Boston. And I think that while I do appreciate the opposition, I also think that it's an opportunity for us to support communities who are trying to... Excuse me, my phone is blowing up. To help support folks who are trying to bring quality healthcare to our neighborhood. So I just want to go on the record in support of the birthing center. And I think it's also really important. It was designated to be close in terms of its close proximity to other area hospitals, and I think that that's an important consideration that we need to take into account. And it's also, again, wanted to just uplift that this will be the only Black-led birthing center in New England. And we know that when it comes to Black and Brown maternal health, prenatal care crucial is crucially important in the early stages. So regardless of people's income and immigration status, I think this is an opportunity for Boston to do rights. And oftentimes, we have this syndrome that not in my backyard, but there are certain things that we can fight for, and then there are certain things that we're going to dig our heels in. This is one that I believe deserves my full advocacy. So I want to thank my colleagues who have spoken before, so I'm going to ditto everything they said, plus my own little personal experience here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to go to O N S, turn me?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I serve as the community engagement specialist for the Roxbury neighborhood. The applicant has completed an extensive community process, which consisted of two abutters meetings held on October second and December twelfth, as well as agreeing and meeting with a smaller group of abutters in the neighborhood. The first abutters meeting was well-attended with one hundred participants plus, where mixed stances were voiced, with more in support than opposed. One abutter did point out that there are more participants than there are abutters in the neighborhood and that those opposed are director abutters, while the supporters are from a broader neighborhood. Those opposed felt that the building is inappropriate for what they feel is a residential neighborhood, stating they support a birthing center, supporting a disadvantaged women, but not at this proposed location. Concerns were also voiced about the demolition of the existing structure, where reportedly a Brahmin surgeon, John Collins Warren, invited. Abutters also voiced concerns about parking and noise from emergency vehicles. Those who supported the proposer voiced the need for a birthing center supporting people of Black, African, and Hispanic descent, and people who statistically are disadvantaged in receiving proper healthcare, specifically during pregnancy with high complications and mortality rates during birth. These members of the public also noted there are non-residential buildings in this street, such as schools and a church. A second abutters meeting was held with... Supporters also attended the second meeting, again, expressing their desire to increase healthcare access in Roxbury. Next, the proponent presented to two civic groups, both Roxbury Path Forward on January 14th and Roxbury Neighborhood Council on February 18th, to address their concerns. The proposal was opposed by both groups, opposing the rezoning of residential land for commercial use. To date, we have received 100 letters of opposition, again asserting that the proposal is on historic property, is not aligned with the character of the neighborhood, and a commercial property should not be embedded into a residential neighborhood. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services has received support from many abutters' residents, from the broader Roxbury and abutting neighborhoods, with 366-plus letters of support. This support involves a 213-signed online support petition, 111 individual letters of support from both immediate and surrounding community with a few abutters, and 22 letters of support from organizations and elected officials, organizations such as Center for Teen Empowerment, Mass Department of Public Health, Madison Park Center for Disease Control, and New Commonwealth Racial Equity and Social Justice Fund, to name a few, as well as elected officials such as U.S. State Representative Ayanna Pressley, State Senator Liz Miranda, and State Representative Chris Royal and Boston City Councilor Julia Mejia. Thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Rep. Royal's office, Brian?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just want to briefly kind of summarize Councilor Royal's support for this project. This is a historic project to open Boston's first birth center as a key tool to meet an urgent need in our communities and to provide perinatal and maternal healthcare services to all Boston families regardless of income or immigration status. The state has one of the highest rates of maternal morbidity, and for Black people and other birthing people of color, these numbers, as well as rates of maternal mortality, are getting higher. Birth center care is a proven resource in addressing racial inequities in perinatal and maternal healthcare and improving health metrics for communities of color and all birthing people. So Councilor Royal would like to reiterate his very strong support for the neighborhood birth center project in Roxbury, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have several raised hands.
I was just going to go through as many as we can, and I ask people to please be brief, and if we can't get to you, please put your comments in the chat.
Let's start with Sophia.
At the core of this issue, when you strip away all the emotions, it comes down to one undeniable fact. This isn't about whether Roxbury needs a birthing center or more nonprofits. It's about a group of businesses pushing to change the legal zoning of a residential lot, wiping out two historic homes within a recognized historic district, and replacing them with an office building. This isn't a community-driven process. It's about a business-driven agenda that ignores the voices of the direct abutters, the direct abutters, the neighbors, and even some of our state and city officials, all whom have strongly opposed this project. This is their vision, not ours, ours being the direct abutters. This is about a group of businesses attempting to rezone a residential lot, erase two homes that could potentially provide housing, and impose their vision on a community that does not want it. This is not progress. It's a blatant disregard for the voices of the people who live here. And it's not okay for outsiders to dictate the future of our neighborhood while disregarding the people who live, work, and advocate for this neighborhood every single day. This is our community, and we will continue to advocate for what is right, not for what benefits outside interests looking to nonprofits that are out earning, that are out earning our ability to have stable neighborhoods. We are a community that has poured our hearts and souls into building and preserving our historic neighborhood, a place where families thrive, where we care for our elders, and where we lift each other up. Our streets align with homes that have been lovingly passed down through generations, keeping families rooted in the place they've always called home. Way before nobody wanted to be in Roxbury, we were still here. We are two and three family houses filled with grandparents, parents, and children living together, bound by history and love. We are apartments where families have built their lives for over 15 years as renters, raising children and creating memories. We are condos bought with pride by homeowners drawn to Roxbury's rich history and the architectural beauty that cannot be replaced. We are not just a neighborhood, we are a legacy, and we have the right to fight to protect from businesses with personal agendas and ill will towards the people and families who live here. Our homes and our legacy are not disposable. And for the record, this is Sophia Burks at 19 Winthrop Street in Roxbury.
Okay. Welcome to the line.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorraine Payne Wheeler, and I'm speaking for Roxbury Path Forward Neighborhood Association, which was the association that held meetings about this project. And what I'd like to say, I mean, there's a lot that can be said. The 62 abutters do not own property in this neighborhood. There seems to be a real misunderstanding about the definition of an abutter. Sophia lives right across from the building and really quite honestly stated some of the issues that we've had with this project, where people like to mix up their interest in maternity and their interest in the maternal health bill with the problem that this, these lots are zoned for three-family housing. And this happened again. We've been trying to meet with the planning department because the information that they sent to the board is erroneous. It's three-family, 3F4,000 site that they purchased with houses on it. And the planning department has said, hey, let's use the zoning that's next door so that this can be approved. The fact is that schools, neighborhood gardens, churches, they are part of the neighborhood, and they do cause a bit of congestion, but it's limited in terms of time. School ends at 3 o'clock. Churches are most busy on the weekend, but on Sunday. But this particular building, with its six nonprofits, is, has already stated to us they're going to hold everything from meetings to case and errors. And so therefore, it impacts the quality of life for abutters, and this is why we delivered 100 letters to our city councilor and to our state rep, China Tyler. Christopher Royal, who they want to point to, doesn't represent this area and doesn't know these neighbors. And so I guess then it's okay to steamroll the people that have lived here and lovingly care for this neighborhood. So we've got to appeal to the zoning board to do the right thing, follow the legal zoning, and allow us to continue as a mostly residential district. It is simply not correct to say that we are not mostly residential. And they keep pointing to the laundromat, but the fact is, the laundromat has already been offered to be sold for housing, and the whole area would be able to offer the housing that the city and this board has said is so important, but only if you go ahead and deny these variances, the way that they were, the way that an office building was denied at 124, 126 Warren Street. And I'd just like to say that many of these representatives, elected representatives that are on this call, supported this based on the emotional idea of maternal and child health, and never spoke to these neighbors, never come to the neighborhood meetings. And that is how I will conclude my comments, by asking you to follow the legal zoning. Thank you.
Annabelle?
Hello. My name's Annabelle Rubia. I'm the Engagement Manager for the Trustee's Boston Community Gardens, including the Winthrop Community Garden, which is located across the street from 14 Winthrop Street. In my work, I support engagement and community development for the gardens, and I've worked closely with the 30-plus gardeners there, many of whom are abutters, direct abutters, or in the wider neighborhood. I am in strong support of community movement comments moving forward. I believe that this will be, in addition to what everyone has said about the importance of the birth center as a historic development for the city, I would really look forward to having movement, community-oriented neighbors that, in past, when I've collaborated with community centers such as this and gardens, it really adds to the experience of community engagement in the garden and really supports all of the neighbors in having a deeper relationship with the neighborhood. I also am very enthusiastic about the addition of more green space that this project would offer. I think that that's an incredible and important part of neighborhood development, and will add a lot to the residential aspect of the neighborhood. I think it's important to see this as a community center and a space that people will be able to engage with in the neighborhood and will add to the residential aspect of the neighborhood, and I think would be an immense benefit to our gardening community. So I am voicing support for that. Thank you.
Okay. Bill, you're a director abutter?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on 41 Winthrop Street. I don't know if that makes me a director or not, but I'm close, right there. I'll make this quick. So I am with my neighborhood, which is a majority against this project for a variety of reasons. We are not against maternal healthcare, I want to be clear on that. We are pro-maternal healthcare, but not at the expense of taking our neighborhood and making it into a commercial space. That's where we draw the line. This is a historical neighborhood. I've been here four years. I'm a new member of this neighborhood. I first fell in love with the historical nature of this neighborhood, full of 200-year-old homes, but then I quickly fell in love with the people in this neighborhood, the residential aspect of this neighborhood. You cannot just come and take part of this neighborhood and say we're going to make it commercial, and it stops there. This, I've lived in other historical neighborhoods in the United States. This is something that people always fight against, that do not want to happen, is have your historical, you cannot replace these 200-year-old homes. You cannot just go, we're going to wipe out these two 200-year-old homes, we're going to put this space there, and whatever. I'd also like to point out that we've had numerous developers and other organizations that have tried to come into this neighborhood. I have never found a group of organizations that fought so hard and so steadfast to just put this here against our will. And also, at the same time, to Lorraine's point earlier, over half their supporters are not from this neighborhood. They're from, they're from outside, they're from places like JP and other areas. They're not even, I don't, I go to the park with my dog every day. I don't see them. I don't see them. And so I just want to be very clear. It's outsiders that are coming into our neighborhood. They're pushing us around. We've got five nonprofits. It's, the face is a birthing center, but I want to be clear, there's at least five nonprofits involved. Only one of them is a birthing center. Okay? And so it's very misleading in terms of how it's being presented.
Thank you. Any other comments?
How many more raised hands? Do we have?
I would just, this is Sophia. I would just ask that Frank, who's an immediate abutter on the line, he's actually on hold, if you allow him to speak.
If he's a director abutter, yes.
He is a director abutter, and he is on the line. He's in between work calls right now.
I'm going to ask everyone else to, to put their comments in the chat. We've been, we've been listening to this case for almost an hour, so I think we have a lot of information to go with.
Sophia, do you see his name? But I don't, is it a phone? Do you see it on the attendee section under Frank? Because I don't see that name.
Possibly last digit 6009, maybe? iPhone.
So I'm going to, again, ask people to identify themselves in the chat, and if they have a, if they're in support or opposition.
Like, if you're on it, you can raise your hand. Not, not under.
He is an officer. He was responding to a call. Let me try to text him, but if there's another media abutter that can speak, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, we'll take one more, one more for now, and.
Armani?
I'm sorry.
Armani?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, yes, this is Armani White. I am an abutter at 120 Winthrop Street in support of this project. I, you know, pass by this site every day when I go, not every day, but almost every day. There's a laundromat right in front. There's been efforts by people in the community for decades to revitalize Nubian Square and bring back the kind of, you know, excitement that we used to have in Nubian Square. Forgive me for my doorbell ringing. But basically, this is the kind of place that we want to have this type of project. And when we do door knocking, my organization, Reckon Roxbury, connects with hundreds of neighbors every summer. People are excited about this project, and it's really kind of surprising to hear that folks are saying that the birth center is more, is less important than, you know, needs of congestion. It's very clear in our community, across the community, both locally and when you look at Greater Roxbury, that this is a need. You know, we hear multiple elected officials talking about it. So I just hope that the zoning board understands that the way that the community is feeling about this is generally in support of it. And I think there's like a smaller group of folks who are against it because of the way that it'll affect their daily life as, you know, director abutter, but it'll affect my daily life. I've also dealt with the issues with Blue Hill Lab being ripped up for national grid, and tons of other things that are always happening, and we need some change that happens to come to make the community better, and this is one of those examples. And the last thing I'll say is that it's, you know, Boston has a problem with zoning in and of itself, and the city's working on improving it so that it's less of a fight to do things that help the community. And I think this is an example of a way in which, you know, zoning is being used to really penalize a positive thing, you know, for the greater good of the community. So I'm really hoping the zoning board will support this, again, as a director abutter and as an organization that represents hundreds of residents across Roxbury, both right next to this place and, you know, as a resident. So thank you so much for your time.
Okay, I'm going to turn it back to the member, council, our board members who have not had a chance to ask questions. Any questions from the board?
Sorry, Councilor Anderson here. May I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, please, quickly.
Thank you so much. I had to jump on because I noticed that a lot of state reps, including Rep. Miranda, Councilor Lou Jean's office, Councilor Mejia's office, Councilor Murphy's office, Rep. Royal, Rep., and then Councilor Royal's office, all have come out to support it. I want to be very clear that I support the project wholeheartedly, and I want it to be at another location. I think I even proposed to the developers and the partners that there's several locations that I would love to work with them, with BPDA, to maybe create a prospect RFP for them to go, places like on Quincy Street, on Warren Street, that where there are land and parcels big enough to be able to accommodate. Because of the historic restrictions, as well as all of the meetings that I've gone to in the community, I was very clear with Eliza and other folks that I met with. Boston Medical Center called me and asking me to support, and some other folks. And again, the issue is, is that when you come into a Black neighborhood, you are talking about an issue that you know impacts the Black neighborhood, but then people that are not from Roxbury come in and say, look, you need this, so we should impose it, and we should encroach it on your livelihood, and we should encroach it in your space. Whether or not you like it, we know what's good for you. You, Black people, don't know what's good for you. And so the issue here is that ZBA continues to do this. I've gone to meetings in affluent white communities where voices are heard, because I share, I share also Fenway, and the hearings are not like this. People are heard, they're postponed, people talk about it, and things make sense. In this kind of situation in Roxbury, none of those state reps or representatives or senators have gone to any of the community meetings. They cannot speak to, about the residents, for the residents, they don't know what's going on. And whether or not they got a couple of people calling them, supporting it, it's only on the developer's side. They have not heard from these community meetings. I know because I was there. And so I'm not, I'm a little bit confused, and I'm a bit disappointed with my colleagues to come in to an issue on Roxbury and to speak on something that they have no idea exactly why or why they should not support it. I agree with them, we support it, there is so much land in Roxbury, we want this in Roxbury. We don't want to go and take it away, and we definitely don't want to encroach on our neighbors, our residents. And as our constituent, as one of the residents mentioned, this is a neighborhood where folks didn't even want to be here. Land has, is blight because BPDA and sacking of Boston, urban renewal, all took it, stole from, pillage land from the Black people here in Boston. I agree with Armani. We should, we should look at more amenities, we should look at ways of creating more housing ecosystems, more holistic walk. more holistic, walkable streets up to where I can walk up to Nubian Square and find everything I need in just within 15 minutes' walk. I wholeheartedly agree with him and I wholeheartedly agree with the residents about housing as well. But this is about encroaching in a corner that would actually impede on people's livelihoods. And I am asking ZBA to heed to Roxbury Voice and stop this nonsense where we just take the voices of electeds who have not been on the ground, talking with our neighbors, talking with the residents, and don't actually understand why people are opposed to it. Everyone is saying they love the idea. Everyone said they want this. Can we work on a different land? Why did you buy a land that you cannot keep up with a mortgage prior to understanding your neighbors or your butter's feedback? Why did you put yourself in such situations? So I, I think, I think at this point, I think at this point, thank you so much. I think at this point, in terms of the butters, Armani, I'm happy to share the list with you of all of the butters. The constituents are correct when they say that most of their supporters are not director butters. They have listed that someone signed on the land that belongs to the city. So I don't understand their list. I have gone through the list and I've compared it to both. I have the butters that has opposed it and I have the butters that have supported it. And I'm simply trying to be in the middle as a consolidator and say, "Look, there is a way of us doing this, just not in this location." So I thank you all of you for being here and being interested in this topic. And ZBA, I hope that you will do the right thing for the people of Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I, I'm interested to hear a couple more voices from the director butters. You know, we do have probably two more cases in front of us. It's 1:00. I'm, I'm willing to hear from more Roxbury resident butters, if that's okay with, if others feel the same.
I'll ask if any, if any other members have other questions and we can circle back to that. Okay, so I see several who are on Winthrop Street. There's someone at 13 and someone at 11. Can we hear from them? 13 Winthrop Street?
Is it Nadine or is that the name of the?
I think that's Michaela.
I just saw addresses. I saw, I'm just.
Michaela is here with Charles Justice.
Okay.
And they're saying.
And I'm Nadine Riggs, I'm here.
Yeah, hello, good afternoon.
You're on.
Yes, I live at 13 Winthrop Street. My name is Charles Justice and I'm in full support of this project. Let me just say that there was a clinic on Winthrop Street before and nobody is mentioning that. So it's nothing new. I would take that center over any type of housing in that, that Pacific area, mainly because it's so congested. But I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nadine?
Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nadine Poindexter Riggs and I live at 43 Winthrop Street. It's outrageous that we are being portrayed as we are against black maternal health. Nothing could be further from the truth. We fully support black maternal health, but what we won't support is being pitted against other nonprofit maternal health agencies and birthing support organizations that believe they have the right to decide what gets demolished and built in our neighborhood. This is a blatant attack on our community and everything we have fought to protect. This neighborhood is our home. Its future should be shaped by those who live here, fought for it, never walked away when times got rough, got rough. Our voices matter. Our visions matter. Again, we are not against maternal health. We are against rezoning a plot of land in a residential neighborhood meant for housing into commercial space when Roxbury already has plenty of available commercial lots and buildings. This isn't just about one project. It's about the future of our neighborhood. Once this land is rezoned for commercial use, it will stay commercial forever, opening the floodgates for the next business to come in and destroy the fabric of our community.
Dania?
Dania Cobb?
Hello?
Yep, can you hear me?
Hi, thank you. I live at 33 Winthrop Street. Living in Roxbury for 27 years has given me an unique perspective on the changes and developments in Roxbury. I strongly support this project because it values humanity. Absolutely change can indeed be intimidating, but it often brings about a significant benefits and opportunities for growth. I humbly ask for you to support this project as it has a profound impact on the lives of those it serves. Thank you.
Hello, this is Sophia. I would like to speak on Fred's behalf. He tried to put the message in the chat, but I have a copy of it. If it's okay.
You can read it quickly.
He's 11 Winthrop.
Yep, thank you.
I'm Fred, a direct butter at 11 Winthrop Street. I am opposing the project at 14 Winthrop Street for many reasons in which Sophie, Billy, and Mary J have already voiced. I'd like to see residential be restored in that space. I am raising a family in this neighborhood and would much rather do so with a community center directly across from me. Good idea for pushing a birthing center. I just don't feel this is an appropriate location. And that's Fred at 11 Winthrop Street.
Thanks, Sophia. Couple raised hands there. We'll take two more. Okay. Angel, Angelia?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Angelia Jefferson. I am with Families for Justice as Healing, 100 Warren Street. I am a woman of color. I was born and raised in Roxbury and I am in full support of this beautiful project. I feel it would be a safe space for women to give birth to their children. It's creating resources for people of all backgrounds who often feel left out. This is a true community effort, not just one, not just for one organization, but for many. Roxbury deserves this project as it will address, excuse me, inequalities that our, that our families face each and every day. Thank you.
Mary Jane?
Yes, good afternoon. This is Mary Jane Texeri, and I live at.
If you're. If you're speaking, can you speak up?
Hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my name is Mary Jane Texeri and I live at 17 Winthrop Street. And I'm directly across the street from the, the whole project. And I am basically against the project. And the reason for that is basically this is a very dense area. The street is only 18 feet long. We have four, four schools, two schools, four churches. At 3:00 in the afternoon, this street is crowded. You can't get by. I feel as though this is a residential area and that's what we need to keep it as. Once everyone is finished with school, we are finished with, with all the traffic, with all the noise. On Sundays, we have four churches. Churches are out at least by 2:00. And on Sundays, we now have residential to ourselves again. I've been here for 37 years. In the time that I've been here, it's been a residential area. It's been peaceful. Everyone gets along. And our immediate butters, immediate meaning across the street, for the most part, are opposed to this project. Nothing against maternal health. I want to make that clear because the first thing that everyone says is that this is a perfect neighborhood for someone to be able to give birth. It really isn't. If you really want to give birth into a residential area, why then are you going to have a community center right next door?
Thank you.
Non-traffic. So basically, the birth, do you want to keep going?
I believe we should, let's hear from the RNC and then that's it for public comments. Anyone else could go into the chat?
Thanks, Carl.
Is Carl speaking on behalf of the RNC? Who's speaking on behalf of them?
Center requests unmute Carl.
Afternoon. No, I'm not speaking on behalf of the RNC, but they.
Who's speaking?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just want to know who's, who, who was speaking on behalf of the RNC, if they are present. Please raise your hand so Jessica can identify you.
Is it Garrison Charter? You guys speaking on behalf of the RNC?
She's naming the person Connie.
Yes, Connie. Garrison Charter, yeah.
Yes, Connie's work here, speaking on behalf of RNC. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. There's a few issues here. The proponents purchased land in the residential area, knowing it was residential, knowing it was historic, and they set aside time and effort to have events to convince people that they should be in this community. That's the issue because this, the land is zoned as residential. Plan Nubian was our plan to identify as a commercial in the Roxbury area. This was not part of Plan Nubian. This was residential, it was meant to be residential, to purchase something and to change the zoning because you want to should not be something that the community has to bear as their burden. A birthing center is not the issue. The birthing center is a business, an office. It's not a residential use. So ideally, we keep our promise with the Roxbury community and keep our community's residential as, as been promised. To put a residential use into, sorry, to put a commercial use into a residential building because someone planned and wanted to do it does not speak well for how our community is treated. We were promised residential. We'd like to keep it residential. I want to go off to the city officials who've been here talking about supporting the birthing center to help them find a location that's more appropriate. But to have someone come in, buy land that's residential and then trying to convert it into commercial with the support of the planning department of the city of Boston by saying it's next to a residential building on Warren Street, which is a major residential, a commercial corridor, yes. But this particular parcel is in a residential area that is historic and it is not, despite what the planning department wrote, is not in a commercial area. Residents who live across the street, they may want to support a birthing center though, to do want to support. But if it were a mechanic shop, an IQ shop, or anything else, would they still support it because it's a business? The idea is take away the word birthing center and this is a different conversation. So let, let us focus on the zoning and those who live in the area and those who are, and listening to those community members. So thank you so much. I hope this makes sense.
Thank you.
Because we should not allow someone to buy something that's, that's made it and changing. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have a question for Jeff Hampton, just for clarification. This is currently on the 3F4000. I know you need a conditional use for clinical and office. Wouldn't it also be for community center? Because community center is not allowed use in a 3F4000.
Mr. Hampton, are you with us?
If I may message Barazza?
I, I see him, but I, Mr. Hampton?
Pat, is Pat with legal counsel for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
You're going to try to help me make that clarification?
That's all right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's represented on the record correctly per zoning.
So that is part of the, the application and that is cited in the agenda as well, the conditional use permit for community use.
Correct. So I am correct that, that all three use would be a conditional use?
Two variants, one condition.
No, one, two are forbidden use and one's a conditional use.
For community, correct, for.
Community center is conditional use. The office and the clinic are forbidden uses.
Forbidden uses?
Yes. Those wouldn't be.
And is it, is it, because we've heard the merit of both the birthing center as a use, wouldn't, wouldn't it be fair to say that one can propose a proviso that it's for this applicant only? So that people, so if there's ever a change of ownership or a change of.
I can tell you.
Yep.
This better Barazza, that the Board of Appeal in the past has attached provisos.
To a particular use because it's an exception.
Even to Mayon Boyles Street, I believe, you attach provisos that it was very specific to the operator and the use for the site.
Correct, okay.
Something similar and I, I am by no means putting words in your mouth.
Right.
I'm just, this applicant only, for this use only.
Right, correct. And that's why I just wanted to, clarification, because, you know, we.
And who, who is this applicant only? Because you're talking about the birthing center and there are also obvious uses.
Well, it's for, it, it would be for the, the applicant, the owner of. So it would be for Community Movement Commons, who my understanding is the applicant for the, for the proposal, correct?
So I just want to go down that.
Because it, it combines a series of partnership models, but the, the organization, the applicant, and you can correct me, Pat, in my understanding that it's Community Movement Commons. They're the organization.
I'm sure.
Huh?
I'm sorry, Pat?
May I respond to that? I'm, I'm happy to clarify it.
Yes, I think it would be helpful to clarify because, you know, there, there are, if you're, if the applicant is Movement Commons, then, and the provisos attached to them, how does that impact the individual organizations underneath it?
Of course. So you're correct that the applicant is an entity called Community Movement Commons, Inc. That entity is a Massachusetts Chapter 180 nonprofit. That entity has six member organizations, all of which are nonprofit organizations. So while the applicant would be subject to the decision, the individual birth clinic in the space would be operated, pursuant to a lease, by Neighborhood Birth Center, which is one of the members of Community Movement Commons, Inc. So that's how it's organized. And, and I'll say on behalf of the applicant, we would be happy to stipulate to a proviso that only Neighborhood Birth Center would operate this clinic and that it would not be transferable to another operator.
So I'm going to extend your line of thinking to all of the uses that are there because I think people are, as people are rightfully pointing out, there are more than one use, even though the focus has been the birthing center.
So I, I would suggest a more flexible approach might be appropriate for the office and community space. I, I think it's more appropriate for the clinical use to be specific to the birth center.
Right.
That's how we've prevented it. I, I can say with certainty that based on the owner being a nonprofit organization, there are many requirements about how that space can and cannot be used. And we have in the organization's governing documents very specific requirements about who can be in that space and how it can be used. So it's not something that would be, you know, we couldn't have a for-profit entity come in under the organization's governing documents. That, that's just not something that, that it could permit under Chapter 180.
Right, and so when, when, when you were in front of us, you know, we did ask for additional outreach, which you have shown specifically to the R, to the RNC and also to really understand the partnership model because it was, there was concerns raised, you know, to make sure that it was stable and sustainable for, for the users, for the end users to be able to afford midwife prenatal care. to afford midwife prenatal care. And I think, I think you did a very good job really explaining your extensive community outreach and along with already the BPD kind of review process as well. Uh, I think that was made very evident and I think, you know, you really, um, kind of addressed those concerns and I think it is really important to hear both sides, the positive, negative. Um, you know, to have so much support and also lots of concerns from the neigh, from the neighborhood in regards to use, where we have to really consider like the impact of the decision. So I just want to, uh, kind of thank everyone for, you know, showcasing kind of their, their points of views and, and concerns for kind of the future development of the neighborhood.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'm, I'm going to put forward a motion. I also wanted to applaud the relocation of the accessible, um, parking spaces closer to the entrance and to make sure that this, this amenity also serves the general community by making it accessible through a accessible path and, uh, providing outdoor spaces. I want to put forward, um, a motion to approve the project with a proviso that the clinic, clinical use, um, be for the applicant only, specifically to the, I don't have the organization in front of me, that it's just the clinical use is only for the applicant only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Do you have a view?
Mr. Collins?
Sorry, I vote no.
The chair also votes no, the motion does not carry. Is there another motion? Caroline? In the absence of another motion?
Well, maybe the, the people that said no can put forward another motion to, to offer another avenue for the project.
I'm going to try again.
Can I, can I make this motion? I don't know if it's a suitable motion, but I like to make a motion with a "no" without prejudice.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Well, I think the project works. I would like to approve the project, but just to make sure that they are not denied. I vote yes.
Mr. and Ms. Better Barazza?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I, can I make this for the public record? A "no" without prejudice means that the applicant can come in front of us with slight changes, but the issues still hold in terms of the conflict that we're seeing regarding, um, the use. Well, I guess they would have to drastically change the project's use that would most likely not consider office space and clinical use and go more towards housing, for example. So what I'm suggesting is that the "no" without prejudice really doesn't change anything. A denial would say you need to go to a different location, but a "no" without prejudice is not going to solve the issues in front of us unless the whole project changes completely in terms of its use.
I, I agree, but the, the alternative at this moment is just straight denial that wish, make the project change substantially and spend more than a year. So at this moment, I'm not sure what is best for the community and the project if just have a denial without, uh...
Well, we've, we've had a motion that's been seconded and voted on, so-
Right, right, so-
We'll have your feedback, so-
Right, so I'm just talking out loud in front of-
Thank you.
-for the applicant to understand that to come in front of us, we are requiring them to change substantially their program irregardless, regardless of the mass of the building and footprint of the building. So I just wanted to make that clear for the applicant. That's what that means.
Thank you. Next case?
There with Madam Chair? As we return to, as we return to, uh, the last-
The 930s, yes.
The 930s, yes. Uh, which would be... First, we start with case BOA 1670931 with the address of 1440 Beach Street. Um, I understand this listed twice, but, uh, we have been asked to make-
They are separate cases, yep.
So, um, so it's the applicant and their representative present?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Secretary? Of course, Madam Chair. Uh, I know it's, uh, it's been a long day, so I'll attempt to be brief on both of these. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty, Miller and Hanley here on behalf, uh, of the applicant. Um, the first is, uh, Local Locker and the property owner. Uh, if you could go to the first, slide two, please. Uh, thank you. Um, is neighbor, and I'll be, I'll be brief, is Neighbor Property Group. Uh, this first one, uh, is to remove, this is an existing parking garage. Um, it's been a parking garage for many, many years at 14-40 Beach Street in the Chinatown neighborhood. Um, this first, uh, there's two matters, individual matters for individual tenants, uh, that are being proposed. The first is for a Local Locker storage use to remove and replace, as you can see here, nine parking, uh, stalls, um, approximately 3,000 square feet in the existing parking garage for storage locker units, uh, kind of like a self-storage amenity, not only for monthly parkers, but residences and businesses as well. Uh, next slide, please, Madam Chair. Uh, just the team. Uh, Alex was on from Local Locker. He unfortunately had to drop off. Um, but, uh, with me today as well is Dimpech Darji, who's the CEO of Neighbor Property Group. They are the property owner of 14-40 Beach Street, uh, in my office as well, obviously, is here. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Um, this, uh, again, is an existing parking garage. They purchased this property about two and a half years ago. Uh, they've made over $4 million in investment since then in the garage, including things like concrete repairs, paint, uh, you know, new painting, new equipment, fire, life safety and security cameras and things of that nature. Um, and the idea here is to, to keep this as a parking garage, but, uh, to take underutilized space in the garage and utilize it for, for this use. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the overall garage is 500 spaces. Uh, the, uh, there's nine levels, including, uh, lower levels A through C. Uh, this specific use, Local Locker, would, would be on the lower level, as you'll see in a moment. Uh, basically, when they purchased this garage a few years ago, uh, after doing some studies, they realized that it's not really full, uh, on average, or not very full at all on average. And so the idea here is to provide some complementary uses in the underutilized space, uh, that wouldn't cause any displacement to monthly or, uh, long-term parking renters. Uh, there's also ground floor retail, uh, that will remain, is not, not being touched. Um, next slide, please. Uh, again, um, this is, uh, the, the proposal for Local Locker. You can see in green, uh, on the below, it's, it's, uh, in the lower level. Um, the, uh, it would be about half of that level. Um, again, the idea here is that this is kind of an accessory storage use. Uh, it would be complimentary and accessory to the existing parking garage. Uh, the idea was that this could be beneficial to the neighborhood and the community, um, to provide kind of additional uses in underutilized space. Um, the strategy is to continue operating this facility as predominantly parking as it has been for many years, uh, with these amenity uses. And, um, you will see, uh, on the, uh, that this, this area is actually going to be, you know, self-contained and secured, uh, in the space, uh, which you'll see in a minute. Uh, next slide, please. And here's what I was speaking about. Um, it's, again, about half of this Level A, which is the lowest level in this garage. Um, the area would be self-contained. It would be secured off via an access door, which is that door on the right side, uh, of the hatched area that's kind of pointing towards the Level A. Uh, that would be an access door. Um, it would be self-contained. Uh, in order for folks to get into the space, they will have to get a code via renting one of these, um, one of these lockers, uh, and you would not have access to it, uh, to it otherwise. Uh, next slide, Madam Ambassador will show an example of what, what these look like. Um, you know, closet sizes ranging from, you know, 12 to 40 square feet, uh, those, they're about seven feet high, kind of like an extension of an apartment. Uh, this would be for things like golf clubs, skis in the off-season, Christmas decorations in the off-season and the like. Uh, again, a neighborhood self-storage option that kind of caters to dense urban areas where maybe closet space, uh, and extra storage space is limited. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just very briefly on the operations, this is a conditional use, so this is important. Um, normal business hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Again, the door will lock outside of those hours, so even if you have an access code, you're not able to get in there. It is a self-serve model, but again, with reservations and, and, and having to have access codes, uh, things of that nature, so it's not, uh, open at all these, uh, overnight. This type of use and with Local Locker, who's the operator here and would be the tenant, they've been operating since 2018. Uh, they have 60 nationwide locations, which they operate successfully. They have lots of, uh, locations, for instance, in, in New York City and, and Washington DC where they do this and it's been very successful. Uh, so they do know what they're doing. Uh, they are a good operator, um, and, um, you know, this is based on what they've done in these other locations. Uh, next slide, please. I think this will be the last slide. It's just the refusal letter. Uh, this is a conditional use in the Chinatown Commercial Chinatown Zoning Sub District. Um, we would suggest to the board that these conditions are met here by the use. Uh, the specific site is an appropriate use, uh, in this existing parking garage. Uh, the use won't adversely affect the neighborhood. In fact, uh, this will not even be noticeable from outside of the building based on where it is located, um, and all the other, um, conditional use requirements, um, would be met, uh, as a result. Uh, next slide, I think is just the thank you. Uh, Madam Ambassador, I think that's it. Um, I would just note that we did, uh, have, uh, in a butter meeting in December, uh, we did meet with the Chinatown Resident Association and the Chinatown Neighborhood Council in January. Um, and I will, final thing I'll note, uh, is that we did get a recommendation of approval from planning, kind of highlighting that the new, the plan downtown that was, uh, that was, uh, completed talks about how many parking structures such as this, uh, are underutilized. And this is kind of a way to be an adaptive reuse of sorts, um, by offering these accessory-type services. Um, tried to be as quick as I could, Madam Chair, but happy to pause here and, and answer any questions that you may have.
No worries. Uh, is this the first loc, first or only location in Boston?
This is the first location in Boston for this specific, uh, user for, uh, Local Locker. However, there are similar type uses in other neighborhoods of the city, um, but not run by, by this company, yes.
And during the hours of operation, does someone have unlimited access? Like they can go in, you know, 10 times in a day or whatever is the case?
They do not, no, they, that's a great, sorry, Madam Chair, that's a great question. Dimpech, uh, is with me from, um, from the Neighbor Property Group. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dimpech, but no, Madam Chair, um, you are not, it's not a come and go. There's, they have access only for a set amount of time, kind of like a reservation. Um, so it's not all-day access. They will have to reserve it through, uh, through the company.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that. So there are certain number of limitations that they can come in and out, um, for the unit. That's controlled by the, uh, storage operator through the app. Um, the other thing, I guess that would be a deterrent to that is, you know, they do have to pay for parking to come in and out. So if they're coming in 30, 40, 50 times a day too, they'll be, you know, uh, paying parking unless they're monthly in there because you can also walk in. But yeah, part of, uh, the intent here is not to, um, increase a significant amount of volume and we do have protections in place where, um, you know, this isn't, this isn't doing that. We're not creating a ton more volume of people going through here.
Other questions from, sorry, go on.
One more thing. Uh, you know, in speaking with Local Locker and other groups like this we've worked with, uh, typically a person comes in once or twice a month to access the locker. It's rare someone comes, uh, you know, more than that.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Can I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Zevah Jones, representing the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Regarding 14-40 Beach Street, our offer, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted jointly for both of the proposals, including a joint of butters meeting held on 12/17/24, which was attended by no constituents. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with both the Chinatown Residents Association and Chinatown Neighborhood Council, which convened on January 8th and January 21st of this year. Uh, the association has expressed interest in the applicant agreeing to a sunset clause on this proposal to ensure that the applicant is upholding their promises to the community. At this time, the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Sydney and I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go in record and support based on a thorough community process and feedback from residents. He respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the Chinatown community on any quality of life concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. See no additional raise hands at the moment. Mr. Cizula, would you be open to that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
The sunset, by the way. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
So, I'll make a motion to approve with the sunset clause, so it goes back in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA 1668148 with the address of 14-40 Beach Street. I believe the applicant and the representative are here.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thank you. Again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, uh, McDermott Quilty, Miller and Hanley. Uh, with me again is Dimpech, uh, from the Neighbor Property Group. Uh, this will be a shorter, uh, presentation. We do have folks on from Avis Budget Group as well, uh, who, uh, is the proposed tenant. Uh, Madam Ambassador, if you just go to the next slide, please. Uh, this, so this is, again, the reason for the, the separate, uh, presentations is they're separate tenant groups, they're separate uses, and there are separate, uh, zoning requirements, uh, for this. Uh, this is a separate tenant. This is for a, the same parking garage to add a car rental use for, uh, for Avis Budget Group, um, to, uh, the garage as well. Uh, next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. Uh, so from Avis, we've got Nick Marzilli, who's the district manager for New England and Ross, uh, may or may not be on. I know Nick is on, uh, from Avis Budget Group. And again, Dimpech from the Neighborhood Property Group, uh, who is the, uh, property owner and he's the CEO, uh, of, of that group. Uh, next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. So we can go to slide six, Madam Ambassador. This is the same slides, Madam Chair and board members that I presented, so we don't need to go over it again. Perfect. Um, slides, this is great. Um, so this is separate, you can see here in yellow, uh, Avis would be on levels B and C, so different levels, um, than, uh, Local Locker. Um, there would also be a small office space on Level 1, which is actually at the ground level, uh, which is the currently existing parking vestibule office pay station area, uh, that will be repurposed into the off- office, pay station area that will be repurposed into the office for Avis. And those pay stations will just be relocated to a separate area of the garage. This would utilize, you could see in yellow, this is about 35 parking stalls on these two levels. And this would be for parking for the rental vehicles, along with customer pickup and drop-off areas. Next slide, Madam Ambassador. Here's that pay station that I had just referenced. This would be the new proposed office space for Avis in that existing kind of office, excuse me, in that kind of existing vestibule and small parking office area would just be repurposed for Avis. Next slide.
Stop.
This is just the photos of the garage area. You could see, again, existing parking use. This, this would just be where the vehicles would be parked for Avis instead of monthly or, you know, daily parkers. Next slide, please. Again, as to Avis, operations and management, normal business hours, even less than Local Locker, actually, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. They would be bringing three or four full-time employees on site. Avis has been operating, they're a national car brand, they've been operating since 1950. They have eight other locations in Boston, so they're very well oriented with working in the city. They actually have none in, in the downtown kind of Chinatown area, as you can see here from this map. So they're looking to provide this amenity and bring the use into this specific location. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. And just again, the refusal letter. So it's interesting, all vehicular uses are actually forbidden in the Commercial Chinatown Subdistrict, but this is a long existing parking use. The idea would be, you know, that this automobile rental agency use would be complimentary and accessory to the parking garage use. Really would not, you know, we don't believe would be much of an impact whatsoever on immediate area as a result. We had the same, a, a community outreach process for this project as we did for the previous meeting with all the applicable neighborhood groups. And again, I'll just highlight that the planning recommendation was of approval. Kind of, you know, again, underutilized space in a parking garage, adaptive reuse, offering car rental services that, you know, can, can assist and help folks in the neighborhood get access to a car, and visitors as well, who might not have one. So happy to pause here, Madam Chair, again, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll have public testimony?
Good, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As previously testified, in a butters meeting was held jointly for these proposals on December 17th, which was attended by no constituents. And they did also visit the Residents Association and the Neighborhood Council, which expressed the interest in the sunset clause on this proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sydney, I'm from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn would like to go on record in support, based on a thorough community process and feedback from the residents. He respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the Chinatown community on any quality of life concerns. Thank you.
See no additional raise hands at the moment. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1660692 with the address of 244 Brenman Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the boards?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Flynn, the business address of 245 Summer Street. In the interest of time, I'll just ask if there are any questions at this point. I, I'm kidding, I kid the board. I, I understand it's been a long day. So with respect to this proposal, this involves the change of occupancy of a pre-existing three-family dwelling. We are proposing to change the occupancy from three to five units here on behalf of my client, Cole Moran. With us, I believe David Choi, our project architect, is also with us, but may I try to jump off because of time?
Yep, I'm, I'm back on.
If we can jump to the next slide, please, I'll try to be as brief as possible with this presentation. So currently, this property was formerly located in 3F 2000 District. Not to sound like a broken record, this board is well aware at this point that the amendments to Article 53 changed a number of the zoning districts, including this one. This is now what we call the EBR 4 District. And I'll talk about the zoning compliance in a moment. Next slide, please. Real quick overview, this is located directly across from Bremen Street Park, as well as within steps of the MBTA's Blue Line Airport T Station. You can see the relative relationship of this property to other properties in the surrounding context. We do not propose to demolish the structure. This will involve a complete renovation with a vertical addition, creating a fourth story. Next slide, please. I think you probably jumped beyond these. This just gives a quick overview and context if there's any questions. So you can jump to the next slide, please. Further. Next slide, please. So just showing the side context to the building, our building's on the left side of the screen. The buildings to the right, actually, this board approved for a similar renovation with a vertical addition, based upon the new zoning. I probably should have included that, but just to give the idea of what the current context looks like in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Different view, next slide. Next slide. We can jump beyond the zoning refusal. I'll walk through that in a moment after we've seen the remaining slides. Next slide. So I'm showing our existing condition here, Madam Chair and members. We do have the existing building with a current 23-foot setback, with the side setbacks just around three feet on both sides. We do not intend to change anything with respect to the footprint of the building itself, except for that area where we do see the porch located to the rear. So the building would be entirely squared off. The foundation does not need to change, that is currently the limits of the existing building. There will be rear decks proposed to the rear of the property. Next slide, please. Just showing our floor plans, we do propose habitable living space at the lower level. When we get to the elevations, you will see that this does have a full walkout condition to the rear of the property, so it is adequate for living space for that, for that unit at that lower level. And then we show the levels going up on levels 1, 2, 3, and then the new level at Level 4. Next slide, please. These are just some of the axiomatic views to show the, the elevation going from Bremen Street to the rear, as I did indicate. This does have that full walkout condition that allows for both adequate ceiling height, ventilation, light, air, et cetera. And you can see the relationship with that upper level that's being proposed. We do not propose a roof deck. That would be a separate approval process if that were going to be incorporated. Next slide, please. Just again, our elevations showing, it's probably a better illustration of the depth of the building, as well as the extent of the decks in the rear, and the elevation showing the vertical addition above. We do have full windows on the right side of the building, as you can see in this particular elevation. With respect to the zoning on this matter, Madam Chair and members of the board, and I'll be brief about this. This was cited under the former provisions of Article 53, as it was filed before May 1st, oh, actually, before April 1st, before the actual news on which effect. So a number of violations have been noticed that are before the board today. But I will walk through those that I've done in the past with respect to current compliance under the amended Article 53. First and foremost, this is subject to Gcod, because it is within the overlay district, and the extent of work that's proposed does require Gcod approval. We do have our Boston Water and Sewer Commission letter, as well as our no harm. This probably represents the last of the cases, I think, that we filed, at least my office filed, under the former version of Article 53. However, we were cited first for insufficient lot area for additional dwelling unit. Because Article 53 was amended, that no longer is a violation, so that would be eliminated under amended zoning. With respect to multifamily use, EBR 4 actually allows multifamily, so we are proposing five units. That would be a compliant use under current zoning that's in effect now. The number of, a lot of stories is cited as excessive. The former zoning only allowed three. Current zoning does allow four stories at this, at this location. Same with height, formal height was 35 feet, that was allowable in the district. It has been increased to 50 feet, and this is below the 50-foot height limit, and therefore be compliant as well. We were cited as excessive FAR, that is in the refusal letter before the board with the public notice. FAR is no longer a regulation that is in effect under the amended Article 53-4, the EBR 4. Instead, Article 53 now limits lot coverage. In this particular case, we do have a lot coverage that we submit is less than the 60% that would even be permissible, or be permissible under the current amended regulations. I do note that the planning department has indicated that this does not meet the current requirements of lot coverage. We would dispute that, because the definition of lot coverage is the actual building footprint. The rear decks to the back of a property do not count towards lot coverage, and therefore we would be within compliance of the 60% limit. We also were cited for the insufficient rear yard setback. This is an interesting calculation, and I'll try to be as simple about it as I can. EBR 4 now requires one-third of the lot be the depth for the setback. So this lot is 80 feet in depth. The general rule would say 26 feet is the required setback. However, because this is also a shallow lot, we're able to reduce the total lot setback by an additional 10 feet, so the required setback would actually be 16 feet. The distance to the rear deck is at 15 feet. We could actually be compliant. However, the stairs themselves, which are uncovered and are required for egress, are the only portion of the building that extend into the rear yard. We certainly can look at that through design review to see if there's any ways to mitigate that. We also would point out that I think the planning recommendation indicates the building's depth would exceed this allowable 70 feet that is permitted in EBR 4. As I indicated, the building itself does not get any longer, and building depth does not take it to consideration. Rear decks, which I believe the planning department is citing for purposes of saying it does not comply. As for the insufficient side yard setback, my understanding is that that was cited originally because of Article 53 requires a larger setback for multifamily use. However, the amended Article 53 does allow for vertical additions that would be above a non-compliant condition. So in this case, even though we are below the three feet that is required for the side yard setback, as long as we are within the height limit, and we're not extending beyond the current non-conforming condition, that is permissible under Article 53-30. Last is insufficient open space. We do require permeable space now, under amended Article 53, there is no open space requirement. 30% would be about 636 square feet. We have about 600 square feet in the rear yard alone. We could make up an additional 30 feet in the two side yards, or at least the rear portion of the side yards as well. And again, I know planning cited that, but our calculations suggest there's more than enough area to comply with the permeable space. The last two items, and I apologize, Madam Chair, I know it's a long, but I want to make sure I got them on the record. We were cited as insufficient off-street parking. I believe that the building currently would be exempt from parking requirements at Article 53. We would only be required to add parking for the two additional units that are being proposed. And in this case, that would require demolition of the building, which is frowned upon only by planning, but by city policy for redevelopment. So requesting a variance for the two parking spaces that are being requested, that, that we would be required to request. We would point out that none of the buildings that typically line Bremen Street have off-street parking at all. Last but not least, we were cited for CFRAD. We don't dispute that this is in the coastal flood resilience overlay district. However, the fact that this was filed before April 1st, which is the trigger date for applicability of CFRAD to all projects in the East Boston neighborhood, this would be exempt from being compliant with CFRAD. All projects filed after April 1st, of course, would be required to comply, regardless of whether or not they're Article 80. I know there was a lot of information, so I will pause and address any comments or questions to the board.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony? Mr. Semenelli?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both Gcod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Zevah Jones, representing the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services regarding 244 Brenman Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting on 4/25, which was attended by one constituent who was not opposed to the proposal, although I did receive three letters of support for this proposal. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, which convened on 5/15. The association has expressed support regarding this and have also provided a letter of support. At this time, the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. At this time, Counselor Collins Abata would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
We have no additional raise hands at the moment. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve with EPD review and Gcod review? Or Gcod approval?
Sure. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I don't know, I'm still not comfortable deviating from the planning department's recommendation on that basement dwelling unit.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1679893 with the address of 36 Cottage Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stenbridge, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant for proposal at 36 Cottage Street. The proposal is to change the occupancy from its existing use, which is a three-family residential dwelling and an office in the basement space, to, to a four-unit residential building by converting that basement space from office to residential. When this was filed, this was back in March, it was prior to the new plan East Boston. The sub-district was a 3F 2000, although this last form of record shows that the basement and was built out, built out as such, was used as commercial at some point. My client purchased it, it was empty. The above units were already existing and residential. There's no work to be done to the exterior of the building. This particular location has a steep grade change. I don't know if we can pull up that, great, thank you. You can see the building in the middle. It's already an existing four-story building, and you can see that the basement space in the middle is elevated. As you go back, that elevation is higher. So this would have two full means of egress. It has eight-foot-seven-inch ceiling. It's already, already existing like that as well. If you could go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. You can just see this is the, the site plan, very typical size of lots for that particular area of Cottage Street. Next slide, please. And then we just get in, you can see the existing use on one side, so, and then what we're proposing on the right. So what we're proposing is a unit number four on the building, a 624-square-foot, one bed, one bath, kitchen and living, a living room on side. So we're utilizing the existing contours of the building, and we're able to try to create some more residential housing. And this particular area is all residential housing. There's no commercial in this particular side section. It's a small side street in the Jeffries Point neighborhood section of East Boston. As we get into the other areas, we're not changing anything. So Unit 1 is approximately 750-square-foot, one bed. Unit 2 is exactly identical. And then Unit 3 is a bi-level existing unit. So it has an upper level and a lower level. It's about 1,550 square feet. So we would only be converting that basement space. It would be sprinklered, and as I had mentioned, there's two full means of, of egress as well. And it was used as office and was zoned as office at some point. We, we went through a community process, got the support of the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, as well- We went through a community process, got the support of the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, as well as our neighbors. This particular building, as you can see, is landlocked, so we've got buildings on each side. One, a couple of neighbors did ask if there was any way to create an area for trash receptacles. Normally, the trash is just put out on trash day, but we did work out an agreement with our neighbor to use. They have a trash receptacle area because their building has a breezeway or a walkway on the right side. So we actually worked with them and can use a section. They have a large section on the side of their building to house the trash receptacles for our building as well. So we're actually creating an area for use of trash by this whole conversion. We got cited for two areas. Again, this is the old code. One was for off-street parking. There's no parking there now. So we're not able to create one additional spot. And then lot frontage was cited because it would be less than 55 feet. I just want to point out, I did speak to Mr. Hampton. I think there might have been confusion on the recommendation that says we should look at a three-unit building, but this particular use is already existing as an office. We're just trying to create some residential on the basement, so I wasn't sure about that recommendation. But we aren't creating a new unit. There's already an existing office unit that's there. With that, I can pause to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Just a question regarding the conversion from office to residential. Is it just because you're seeing that there's a lack of use, office tenant use? Is that why?
It's a, yeah, well, when we, Ms. Baza, when we, when my client purchased it, it was basically just storage area and like a desk down there. So it's really a small space. I don't think it was ever, it might have been years ago used as like some kind of a market or a corner store, but you're literally going down. So my client is in the residential business, residential conversion, but, and that seemed a much more appropriate use just given the areas, though.
Right. Thanks for clarification.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 36 Cottage Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting on 61024, which was attended by one constituent who was not opposed to the project as well. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, which convened on 62024. The association has expressed support regarding the proposal and has voted 14 in favor and six opposed. At this time, the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this decision. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Par from Councilor Coladas' office. At this time, the councilor would like to go in opposition of this project because of its not compliance with the new Boston. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Beder Baza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Going to the, going back through the rediscussion scheduled for 11:30. We have, the case we have is case BOA 1640872 with the address of 28 Alene Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present.
I have a clear refuse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
So we are a six-member board.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney General Pugini here on behalf of the proponent, German McGregor. I will be very brief. 28 Alene Street, West Roxbury, the lot size is 4,020 square feet, zoning is single-family 6,000. To give a brief overview, this proposal is to build a new single-family home on the existing vacant lot to the east of 32 Alene Street. ISD had given this address of 28 Alene Street. The house, as proposed, is two and a half stories and would be comprised of three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. In total, there'll be 1,942 square feet of living space. There'll be parking that will be accessed to the right when looking at the building. In late October, as far as community process, we presented the original proposal to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, who suggested some changes to the project by reducing the bedrooms four to three and also respecting our butter with a side yard setback. By doing that, this would also increase setbacks on the side of butters. Upon consultation with the membership and the director butters, we decided to make the reduction to the project. As a result, the proponent has removed one bedroom, one bathroom, and reduced the width of the building, which has resulted in the proposal before you. The change is allowed for us to reduce the FAR to .48, narrowly above the .4, which is allowed, and increase our side yard setback from six to eight feet on the 26 Alene Street side. Though this lot is undersized for the sub-district, it is perfect in context along Alene Street. Almost none of the lots on the street cross the 6,000-square-foot requirement, with the majority of lots in the 3,000 to 4,500-square-foot range. This proposal, a true partnership with our director butters, we worked with them on the redesign. As a result, the director butters have submitted letters of support. I'm happy to answer any questions right now.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an initial of butters meeting on September 9th of 2024, at which there was a lot of feedback given. Substantial changes were made to the proposal after that meeting, and there was a follow-up meeting on January 9th, at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council also provided feedback on the initial proposal, and the revisions they suggested were agreed to by the proponent. And the WRNC is in support of the proposal as it's been presented today. Our office was also provided with forum letters of support a couple of hours ago. We have not had the opportunity to review those letters, but they have been forwarded to the board. And with that background, we defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some raised hands here. Second, Susan Fanci?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm in a butter, well, I guess I'm directly across the street from this property. I am not aware of any January 9th meeting. We have serious concerns even with the reduction. The house is still older than any other single-family home on this street. And his plans include the house next door, that he's going to develop that. So we're going to end up with two enormous houses in one of the oldest lots on the street. We already have severe problems with parking. I had surgery last week, and because I have a driveway, I can have one person come visit me. If more than one person comes, like when I start PT or any of these things, no one's going to be able to park at my house because there are so many cars already parking on this street. The setback that he's talking about for the neighbors is not really going to create an enormous house, very little yard, and, you know, I can't imagine the appeal of this property. It doesn't match any other homes in this neighborhood. And, you know, I don't know what happened with this January 9th meeting, but when we met in September, we had almost 30 people there who were opposed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
DEP? Hi, you're muted?
Hey, sorry, yes, sorry. Kevin Bergen here. So I'm a direct to butter 36 Alene Street. Yeah, I think, so just to reiterate what Susan said. No mention, no meeting on January 9th that we were made aware of, that we agreed to anything on that. Reiterate the September meeting. 30 people added plenty of written comments and pretty much unanimous disagreement with this development. And yeah, I think John has been very generous with his comment that he has universal agreement with a butters. He does not. And also the reference to the size of the adjacent lots, yes, correct, on the size of the adjacent lots, but none of the adjacent houses come close to approaching the 1,900, 2,000 square feet that is referenced here. And then also, John mentioned that we, that the revised plans were submitted, yes. The plans did remove a bathroom and a bedroom, but if you look closely at the plans, they refer to a, basically future-proofing a bathroom for the top floor, if you look closely at the framing plans. So we've posted these comments in the chat as well from my wife Patricia. So just reiterate, we are, nobody is in agreement that is a direct to butter to this. Very generous comments from John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we have no additional raised hands?
Madam Chair, can I address those too quickly?
Yes.
Yes, the side yard setback that they're talking about, the owner of that property, who is the only a butter, and he is a director butter. So the two people that spoke are obviously not a director butter, has written a letter of support, and the board has that. Additionally, the BPDA did their recommendation, and they recommended approval. I'm just going to speak quickly. The proposed dwelling matches the existing character of the neighborhood and the building's proposed massing and style. Existing structures demonstrate a similar yard pattern to the proposed building, with one side preparing to meet the minimum standard and the other facing the dimensional regulations. The proposed project offers the opportunity to add housing to one of several vacant parcels on this block of West Roxbury neighborhood. We did change the plans. We worked with the butters. There was, you know, we, this was how it's supposed to work. It's supposed to work with the people who are most impacted. That is the director butter, specifically the person who is located in 26 Alene Street, and he has written a letter of support, which is on record with the board, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Can I make a motion of approval with BPD design review?
There is a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Beder Baza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you to everyone, and we'll see you next time.
See you there, folks.